Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, September 12th, 2019 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narkowitz, the Chair of the Committee. I'll begin by asking the Clerk to call the role of the School Committee.
Mayor David Narkowitz?
Present.
Ms. Molly Burnham?
Present.
Mr. Rebecca Bucansky?
Here.
Ms. Laura Fallon?
Present.
Ms. Anne Hennessy?
Present.
Mr. Lonnie Kaufman?
Present.
Mr. Don Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Here.
Ms. Susan Voss?
Present.
Your Honor, you have a forum.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our public comment period. This is a time that we allot members of the public up to three minutes to speak to the School Committee. And I have a list of folks who have signed up to speak tonight. And the first person who has signed up on the list is R.J. Castagno. Yes, if you could just step up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
My name is R.J. Castagno. I'm the Regional Manager for Durham School Services. The company is providing the transportation with the school bus. I'm standing in front of you today to speak about some of the issues we had at the start of the school year. To be blunt with you guys, it didn't start off exactly as to plan. There's been some issues that have come up that has been brought to my attention, my team, and working with the Superintendent and his team. We've addressed those issues. We've made, I believe, appropriate changes to our system, to our plans, to our staffing, to our drivers, to accommodate the problems that have arisen and to solve them. Going forward, the plan that we've implemented this last week will be something we'll use as a Plan A going forward. It involves bringing in other drivers from other CSCs for cover drivers to accommodate the issues and shortcomings we have as far as accommodations. In the last few days, we've used those solutions and those drivers, and I've seen a positive change. We're going to continue with those solutions until we have, you know, exactly where we want to be. What we want to be at is that every CSC for Durham should be staffed at about 105%, 110% staffing. Until we get to that point, we're going to continue to use these cover drivers from the other areas. Those cover drivers will be the same drivers over and over. They're not going to be different drivers bouncing in and out, which will give us, you know, some comfort level as far as not being different drivers every day. Those drivers are aware of their route, they run their routes each day so that they're able to do them on time. And that, you know, more so than anything else, is just, I just want to apologize about how it started off. And secondly, just kind of just confirm that, you know, myself and Durham are committed fully to making sure that, you know, the transportation for the kids is safe and a timely one. And that's really all I wanted to say. I just appreciate the time here and the opportunity to speak to the group.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate it. The next person who signed up to speak is Alice Melnick.
I'm actually talking about a bus issue as well, but a different topic. My name is Alice Melnick. My husband, Pat, and I live in Leeds. Our three children, which includes their families, and our six grandchildren, live next door and across the street from us in Leeds. Some or all of you may have read the article that my husband and I sent into the Gazette with some concerns about the idea that there are no seat belts on our school buses. Last year, when our two granddaughters, the children of my daughter Mary, who's sitting here with me tonight, began riding on the bus, I noticed that there were no seat belts when the children got on the bus. And it became a concern of mine because there is so much emphasis on seat belt safety for all of us as we ride in vehicles now. I was thinking a lot about the fact that there were no seat belts. And my husband and I even got more concerned when the children took a field trip to Springfield on the highway and the bus that they took to go down to the museum, and we're talking about kindergarteners here, had no seat belts. Ever since our grandchildren have been born, my husband and I have watched as our children spent, as our grown children spent so much time and effort putting their children into safe car seats. First, they were facing back and then facing front, and then they went to the next level and then they went to booster seats. And there's been so much emphasis on it. Like today, when I took my grandchildren to Lily Library for the little Spanish lessons they go to, the first thing they all did was put their seat belts on. And when I went in to help them, they all said, Grandma, we know how to do it ourselves. And they buckled themselves in. It's my understanding that it's the law in Massachusetts that we all have to use seat belts. And we can actually get fined if we don't, if we don't put our seat belts on. And I can't help but wonder, with these little five, six, seven-year-old children riding in school buses, if God forbid there was an accident, that they would have the strength or the ability to be able to secure themselves and not get really hurt. I just can envision them bouncing out of their seats and getting, and getting hurt. It's a different, you know, when our children, who grew up in Northampton, went on the buses, there weren't seat belts either. But now, we're all so much more aware of how, how much it saves lives and how important it is, that it just seems to me that it's beyond time for us to be talking about seat belts on the school buses, at the very least, for the children who are so young. And so I'm here to just ask you tonight to consider this issue. I know that there are fees that the children have to use to go on the bus. I know that despite the fact I said in the paper I don't want to have money come into it, I know that's always part of, part of the discussion, but there are fees for the kids to ride on the buses now, whether that could be used to put some seat belts onto the buses, or I don't know how complicated the issue is. But I'm just asking, and if you're not the people that I should be addressing this with, please bring that to my attention, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody else who, who I should be talking to. So I very much appreciate for your time tonight, and I also want to thank all of you for all you do for the students, not only for my own grandchildren, but for all the students in Northampton. You give up a lot of time, and I know in our family, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Melnick. And you are addressing the correct body. It's not something we can respond to tonight. That's not really how this works, but we obviously take all the public comment that we receive and under advisement, and we'll, and we appreciate you coming forward to reiterate this to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who signed up is Sam Hopper.
I'm Sam Hopper. I live on South Street in Northampton, and I'm here tonight to share some concerns I have that arose from public comments made by School Committee members representing themselves as School Committee members at a public meeting last week. These comments concern me because they demonstrate a lack of regard for a School Committee's responsibilities, purview, and constituent representation. My first concern is a presentation made and echoed that the budget is not a big part of a School Committee's responsibility. Mr. Kaufman rattled off a long list of things School Committees do. Let me assure you, I am well aware of the things the School Committee does beyond passing a budget. But I find it very troubling that the connection between the budget and the work the Committee does is lost on some. Setting educational goals and policies, another core responsibility of a School Committee, is undeniably linked to a district's budget. My next concern is the suggested solution by Dr. Voss to an issue we face in the most recent budget process. In order to avoid members with direct financial conflicts from recusing themselves if wall-to-wall collective bargaining were to repeat in the future, Dr. Voss suggested the School Committee could tell the union not to bargain that way. The suggestion that a School Committee could or should dictate how a union bargains is an overstep. Additionally, even asking a union to bargain differently in order to resolve a problem that stems from the School Committee and not the union is a, gives the union a disadvantage that's undue. My final concern that stemmed from the School Committee member public comment is the expressed belief that losing a ward rep during the budget process is fine because there are two at-large reps as well. As you know, each resident has three reps, a ward rep and two at-large. The flippant suggestion that more than one, that more than one School Committee member missing your ward rep during a budget vote is not a big deal is dismissive of what should be a democratic representative process. Thinking it's equivalent that some residents have three reps while others only have two, especially during a process as important as the budget, is just plain false. Three is more than two. I have one more thing to share that's unrelated but important. Today is Hunger Action Day, so it feels appropriate to invite everyone to an upcoming public health oversight hearing focused on food and public health. It's going to be Friday, September 27th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Greenfield Community College. One of the panels will focus on food health, I'm sorry, school food. And our wonderful Food Service Director, Ms. Del Hannah, will be one of the panelists highlighting Northampton Public School programs, like summer meals and breakfast after the bell. More details can be found on the event's calendar page of the Public Health Committee Co-Chair, Senator Cumberford. Her website is SenatorJoeCumberford.org, and there's also a Facebook event with more information. Thank you for the work this Committee does, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next person who signed up this evening is Heather Brown.
Heather Brown. I live on North Maple Street in Florence, and I'm here as the Vice President of NACE to just give you some feedback from members from the last couple of weeks. One, thank you for ratifying our contracts last month. And the most feedback that we've been receiving is on the two principal searches that are ongoing right now. And I just wanted to convey a couple of points. One, that members would like to encourage that the process not be rushed and that we take the time that's needed to get the right candidates in both searches. Also, members have been hoping, as we mentioned at our last meeting with Dr. Provost, that the advertising for the positions should be expanded beyond school, school spring, if that's possible, which is not entirely optimal for attracting a possible diverse pool of candidates. We, I think, all have agreed in other meetings that we'd like to attract and retain candidates of color, and perhaps the positions can be posted in some places that members have suggested. So I have a small list, and I'm sure you all have other places that you know we might reach out and post these, these positions. One was the education or administrative departments of historically black colleges, perhaps, and other universities as well. There's a National Alliance of Black School Educators who has a website and a really active membership. We talked to the MTA Alana Group about such issues and wonder if, you know, we could all work together to maybe find out from them. And also, we know Mass Live has a Spanish newspaper, the El Pueblo Latino, that maybe we can advertise in there as well. And any other places that you know of that we may not have thought of. So thanks for listening, and thanks for conducting those searches in a way that we all hope will be fruitful.
Thank you very much. So that was the list that was given to me. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who wishes to speak in public comment tonight? Oh, yes. Who's it? Oh, okay. That was, I saw a hand go up, but I think that was just Heather. Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you very much to everyone who spoke. So we have, we have scheduled tonight an executive session, and then announcements, and then we move to recommended actions. I was going to ask, we have a discussion later on in the agenda relative to contracts for professional development. And I know that Dr. Chevers is going to be available to talk about sort of the substance of those, but there have been some questions that have arisen about the actual 30B bid process and all of the related things to these contracts. So Dr. Provost had asked that the city's chief procurement, sorry, that's the time. Time's up, sorry. That the city's Chief Procurement Officer, Joe Cook, come tonight. And out of the interest of time, because he was given very short notice, I was wondering if we'd have the opportunity to have him speak to the School Committee and address questions related to the procurement process as it relates to those contracts for professional development. So, Mr. Cook, if you'd like to just come to the podium.
Hello, everyone.
Maybe just want to introduce yourself and your role and your background with the city.
My name is Joe Cook. I've been with the city 32 years doing exactly the same damn thing. I've been the Chief Procurement Officer for the city since 1987. I'm also a lawyer. Came to this job right out of law school. I am published on the topic of Chapter 30B in Massachusetts, in the Mass Municipal Lawyers' Association. They call me Mr. Procurement. And if you, on your way out, you go through the main vestibule on the brass plaque in there for the Building Committee, I'm the only person on that plaque that still works for the City of Northampton.
Okay. So do you want to just, I know there was a question about professional, professional development contracts, and I wondered if you could just give us a background about what professional development as it relates to 30B, and also just the process and procedures for the thresholds involved.
Normally, under $10,000, you use sound business practice for any procurement. Over 10 and under 50, you would seek three written quotes. Over 50 would be either an advertised bid process or a request for proposal process. There is a long list of exempt topics in, in Chapter 30B, you know, where you, none of the requirements apply. Snow plowing, there's, it's quite an odd list of things, but lawyers, doctors, architects have their own special process. Engineers, if you're not involving a building, are completely exempt. And one of the things that is also exempt is teachers for professional development. For the specific, the most recent professional development contracts, I met with Ms. Chevers, the Curriculum Director, about this. We discussed her procurement plan for these two contracts. She had a very good idea to let us kick the tires on these presenters. So instead of being locked into an entire $13,000 or $17,000 contract, we could, after the initial presentation for each of these people, you know, if the, if the feedback was, the information wasn't that good, or it wasn't being presented in an effective manner, we could say thank you very much and try something else. So we are really only locked into that very first class. We worked back and forth with the contract language to make sure we were well protected. The people chosen were well thought of, had excellent resumes, and I had no problem with the process, given the amount of money involved. You always want to spend more money or spend more time when you're spending more money. These were very small contracts. They were for a limited time, that we were making commitment. We had a chance to vet these people in our own classrooms, make sure they were doing a good job. And so I really had no problem with it. And I did go back and review those. I found about this presentation at 4:00 today, but I did go back and read the, the contracts and review my notes on the process. So if anybody has any questions about how we did these things, I'd be happy to answer.
Folks, have any questions for, for Mr. Cook? You did say something to me, I just, because it was, every time I talk to you, I learn something new about procurement, which I suppose isn't surprising. But when we talked earlier today, you said, in fact, that you actually can't do an RFP unless a contract is worth $50,000 or more.
Right. The RFP process is reserved for very large, you know, over $50,000, which is not huge, but it's, we're not allowed to use that under $50,000.
Okay.
And we've used that process very, very rarely because it is much more time-intensive. There's almost always a way to put together an invitation for bid process that will get you in the same place, but save, you know, hundreds of hours of staff time. An RFP is very labor-intensive.
Okay. So are there any other questions that people may have for the Chief Procurement Officer while he's here about this topic? Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I was one of the ones that had some questions, so I appreciate your time.
Sure.
It sounds like you know you're the right person to talk to. So if I can just throw off some questions, I think it'd be helpful. Did you get some clarity?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, well, first of all, I know that, I know that an RFP process isn't required, but we could, if we, if locally we, we wanted to incorporate an RFP process, we certainly could, couldn't we?
For this particular type of contract with professional development, since there are no requirements, you could do anything you want.
Right.
And it would take hundreds of hours of staff time to do that.
Now, that's a huge downside. I, yeah.
You would spend more in staff time than you would on the entire procurement, not to mention the savings you might make.
Right. So if, in this particular situation where, where, and we've done this many times, and I spoke to Dr. Provost about it, so I have a much better understanding, thank you, but if under 30B, which is this going, funding professional training or professional development of staff does not fall under 30B, is that correct?
Right. It's exempt.
Exactly. So what does it fall under? Is there some guidelines? I mean, surely, are you saying that we could spend as much money as we wanted for professional development without any oversight? It seems, it seems odd to me that there wouldn't be some laws, some guidance or guidelines that we should be following.
There really is no set of guidelines for the procurement part of it. There's rules against, you know, there's state ethics laws, so we, you know, you couldn't, we couldn't hire our brother-in-law to do these contracts. But, and there is oversight, of course, the Superintendent, this Committee, the Mayor. I read every contract, whether it's under my purview or not. The City Auditor also looks at every contract. So there is a, you know, like four layers of people looking at this, and, but there is no specific format you have to use for this.
The only thing I would add from the financial side of it is that every, you can't even issue a contract unless you have a funding source, and there has to be sufficient funding in the funding source. So you could, you can't exceed what's budgeted in that line item.
Exactly.
The Auditor is always checking.
Right. Well, that's the function of the Auditor, is making sure that, you know, when they come to our office, our cover sheet has all the account numbers that might be charged for that account. And if there's not funds sufficient in any funding source, Auditor won't sign it.
Yeah.
And that, that happens very rarely, but sometimes there's an oversight.
So how do, so the part that is a little bit uncomfortable for me would be if we spent, what I think, I think in this particular case, the professional development that we were, that we were talking about, I think it was a $30,000 contract. So in my world, that's a lot of money. I understand that we, some people have dealing with much larger contracts, but I do think that's a lot of money that needs some oversight. So I was concerned that we went with a vendor that we didn't, we didn't know whether they were the best and the cheapest. I know there's a lot of factors in the decision-making, and sometimes the cheapest isn't the best. And RFPs allow one thing, and other bid processes just go with lowest, lowest bid. And there's a variety of complications there, and I've been in this business and I know the downside. But, all that said, if we, if we contract with a service provider, in this case 30, and what you're telling me it could be $5 million, if there's no limit on it, how do we, as School Committee members, maybe I'm asking for advice, but how do we live up to our fiduciary responsibilities by, if we're responsible for oversight of the budget, and we do have a process in place for kind of approving contracts? And I don't know if it goes far enough. Do you have any advice, like what do we do when, if we feel like the money, if we need to respond to our constituents who might see this, and they ask us, why did you spend $30,000 when there might have been someone just as good for $20,000 or $15,000? And they had somebody in mind, for example.
You're referring to the two contracts combined, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The two separate contracts, okay.
Thank you. Just making sure. Reviewing the contracts that are on your list for signature and approval is certainly, and asking questions of the staff about, you know, who did they look at? How many people's resumes did they review? Would be a good way to vet these things, if you have any questions. And I'd always, my door is open every single day for a School Committee member, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So you're saying in this particular case, since I wanted to ask you, since you looked it up, and it sounds fresh on your mind, so did we look at other potential vendors for this one?
My recollection of my conversation with Ms. Chevers is that they reviewed the resumes and called around and asked other, you know, the people on, listed on the resume what their experience was, and everybody was highly reviewed. And I was very much reassured that, you know, if this person, you know, who supposedly does a very good job, doesn't actually do a good job, they're gone after one session. So not much.
Absolutely. I just want to be clear. I think the people we chose, but my, every factor that we have, and we're going to get a presentation from, from Dr. Chevers later, sounds like fantastic people, and it sounds like the results were great. I just want to separate that from the discussion. I'm talking strictly from a budgetary standpoint, and our responsibility is to provide oversight for the budget, that it just sounds like we have no, we have no say in how we're going to spend money. In this case, it was a total of 30, but you're saying 30B doesn't even require a bid to go out if, as long as it has to do with professional training. I just, I guess I'm surprised by that. If, I'm glad we're following the law. I think maybe as a, as a Committee, we need to have a discussion as to whether we're comfortable with that, or whether we need to initiate a policy above and beyond that to ensure that Dr. Provost is protected and we're protected if we're approving it or not approving it. But I really appreciate you clarifying that we're not breaking the law. That's good to know. And that there's a process in place, I think, above and beyond that. I, you know. I don't have any other questions for you, Ms. Chevers.
I'd just like to add that the, the level of effort for this is appropriate, given the amount of staff time we all have to devote to various projects, and, you know, time we take away doing extra work on this means we don't do something else. So, given the dollars involved and the protection of having the right to immediately cancel this contract, gave me a lot of comfort that, you know, this was being handled appropriately. But you can always vote no, and that's the way you can exercise your, your due diligence in reviewing this sort of contract, any one of these contracts, you can just vote no.
We do go out to bid, like we're, I think, later on tonight, or last week, we went through a bidding process for the bus drivers contract with that. So that, I assume, is not an exemption, but we do it, right? And we spend the hours that's required. Do you see a difference?
Right. It's a $5 million contract for school buses.
Yeah.
So it's huge. And it's much more involved with, you know, school safety, you know, the student safety. It's, it's an enormous contract. It's one of the biggest contracts in Northampton. So we spent a lot of time.
Right. No good. So you, in that case, you're saying it had to do with the amount of money and the importance of it, given student safety, whatever. I totally agree with you, yeah. But in case of the professional development, it didn't rise to that level in your mind?
No, not for that size contract, where we're only committing maybe $1,400 really to a contract, and we can, you know, cancel it anytime. It seemed like we were well protected by just being able to have the experience of having the person teach a class before deciding to keep going with that person.
Before I turn it over to Dr. Provost, I just want to add to that, too. I think the other, the other safety in this, and I'm someone that deals with contracts all the time, and we have a budget, and I have, is that we hire professionals, you know, in this case, a curriculum director, to actually go out and seek out professional development and to work with teachers to arrange for professional development. So that, I mean, that's also, you know, at work here as well. So there's a certain level that we also hire people that we empower to do some of these things, and that happens all the time. So, because there are contracts like this all throughout the school district that, whether it's school, whether it's school lunches, whether it's maintenance, whether, you know, that are happening all the time. So anyway, just want to let, that, that's one other failsafe we have, is making sure we're hiring good staff that are on top of that and that are being supervised. Dr. Voss, did you have questions?
I did. Thank you very much for sharing that. I wanted to tell my fellow School Committee members and others that I do have a question for you, and this is just a little bit of a preface. Getting this information about this contract in the email presented problems for me that were new, and I think it has to do with some of our policies, and we can't talk about those policies because of open meeting law. So this meeting presents the opportunity for us to be able to say what didn't work for us. So that's partly why I asked for this to be on the agenda, and I'm really glad it's separated from the actual professional development, because my questions were not about who we hired or the work they did. It was about how we got to the position we were in, that we were all in at the end of August when we got this email. And, you know, thank you for being here tonight. One question I have for you, but I also have a question for the whole group that's beyond you, Mr. Cook, is, in the original email we got, it said that it was originally thought that no contract was needed. And I'm just curious a little bit about the timeline, when the procurement started, when we knew we were entering into these contracts worth the amount they're worth, and why we, 40 hours before the professional development was to start, were asked to approve something.
I don't know that I was involved in the earliest stage of this conversation. I, when I became involved, a contract was contemplated. Under $10,000, the school department would not have had to, had a contract that is signed by the Auditor, myself, the Mayor, or the School Committee. It would just be, they could issue a purchase order. So at some point... So, at some point, they decided, oh, this is going over 10,000, we need a contract for it.
Dr. Provost, did you want to?
Yes, I think I can speak to that. It has to do with the sort of try-before-you-buy aspect of this whole contract. My understanding is that when Dr. Achievers was first developing the contract, it was for that first piece of professional development, which was below the $10,000 threshold, and then in getting guidance from Mr. Cook, correct me if I'm wrong, the concept of, well, maybe this relationship will extend into the year, which would bring it above the $10,000 contract, resulted in a recommendation that we should create a contract for greater transparency. And that came within the less than 48 hours before the first professional development activity was supposed to take place.
Thank you. That does jog my memory that we, we had a discussion, or I had a discussion with the achievers about, for procurement purposes, we always look at what is the maximum we might spend with this vendor. You know, what do we in good faith know right now we might want to spend with them? And she was envisioning this first, smaller segment, but might want to continue with the same person. And I said, okay, let's look at that total dollar amount then. And that's when we realized it was over $10,000, and even though it's exempt from any sort of competition requirements, our local guidelines say at 10,000, we've got to sign a contract.
So that was sort of the, I think that was the kerfuffle that Dr. Provost was referring to in his email, that it suddenly shifted to needing a contract based on that conversation. So, yeah.
No, no problem. And then, I think, my other comment, question for discussion, is probably not a question for you, but it's very much on this topic. Maybe it is. So when I got this email asking me to approve this, I was put in a really awkward position, and I didn't understand if I had to approve it or not. Our policy says, after reading it carefully, we have 48 hours to say, no, we're not going to approve it. Well, professional development was starting in less than 48 hours, and I certainly wasn't going to call off something that was so well-planned and so important. At the same time, my real concern has to do with some of the things Mr. Kaufman articulated, which is not so much the total amount, but what we're getting, what we're paying people for not very many hours of work. So we're effectively paying people at a rate of $500 an hour. And my fiduciary responsibilities to this committee, and when our money is as short as it has been this year, trying to be really careful of it, that struck me as more than I wanted, and I felt that we should have discussed it at our August meeting, when you're going to pay contracts that cost that much. So I, I didn't like being in that position, and I don't know what we can do about our policies, but perhaps, thinking ahead, if we have this 48-hour window, it was an ineffective window, because we really had to make the decision in a much shorter time. So I see this as a situation that our policy didn't really cover in a way. I couldn't talk to my colleagues about it. I do think we're paying an hourly rate that, if it's appropriate, I would have wanted to see what other people charge in this case.
And I just want to clarify for the public, and is that we, we aren't asking you to approve it by email, because that would be a violation of open meeting law. We can't do, you can't do online deliberation. The policy says that the superintendent is authorized to sign contracts of a certain size. It get, the contracts get shared with the school committee, and any one school committee member has a right to say, actually, I want to put this on a school committee agenda. So you aren't, people aren't being asked to approve it, they're just saying, like, I want to, I want to invoke our right to not give the preapproval process, because we have lots of contracts, and, you know, I think that week we'd gotten three or four other contracts, and so it's, it's really designed for smaller contracts, where we basically said, for small contracts, we're going to empower the superintendent to sign on our behalf, but as a fail-safe, he will share with us a copy of the contract, 48 hours, and then we all have the opportunity to say, you know what, I think I want to put this one on an agenda so we can discuss it. So I just wanted to clarify that, that you weren't asking, I mean, you could say I was approving it, but you weren't actually being asked to vote by email on the contract, because that would be, that would be bad.
Thank you, and I agree, and that was, you said it more articulately than I did. That is, for me, how this ended up on the agenda, and moving forward, I do want us to have a conversation about what is an appropriate hourly rate for people that we employ. We, we're going to talk about lawyers later on the agenda, and, so that's how it ended up here.
Okay, okay, excellent. Any other questions?
Um.
For Mr. Cook, anyway, just.
I'm good. I don't have any questions, Mr. Cook, and again, I thank you very much, I feel better. But I do wonder if we can continue this discussion.
This is part of the agenda, where we can continue this discussion, this is the school committee, now.
Um, we could. I was curious, is one of the policies that's on the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
We're actually being asked to review and approve, the very policy that we're talking about is on the agenda later tonight. It's coming back, isn't it?
Second reading and vote, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just saying, it is on, if you want to talk specifically about that policy, that would seem like a good time to do it, since it's going to be coming up, and that's a chance to make changes to it. So, did you have a follow-up?
Well, maybe you can help me differentiate. So I think there's two things. There's the policy that we're talking about, and there's also this issue that a school committee member with this policy you just quoted said, I'd like this on the agenda because we are paying at a rate that I want to talk about with other committee members.
And I think that's going to be, I think, when we get to later in the agenda, when Dr. Achievers is going to talk to us about the professional development, as the person who is most closely involved with selecting these individuals, I think she will be able to fill us more in about going rate and what the, you know, I think that would be a more appropriate than for Mr. Cook. Great. Any other questions for Mr. Cook?
If anything does come up, please, my office door is always to the committee.
And again, I want to thank you on very short notice for coming over tonight, yes.
So I, I don't, you mentioned a $1,400 threshold, that you weren't worried because of 1,400. I don't know what $1,400 refers to.
The, one day of the time, like, one of the presentations was about $1,400, I remember from the contract, so if that didn't go well, if we weren't happy with the information or how it's presented, we could say, we're all done with this contract, we had the absolute right to just cancel it. So all we were at risk for was $1,400.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Cook. Have a good.
You're very welcome. Nice to see you.
Okay, so, Ms. Hattie?
I don't know if I have a motion, but I have a question.
Sure.
I'm cognizant of the fact that we might be going into executive session now.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if the people who are here to present, I don't know how long this executive session is, but can we do those things, or are those quick things? Barbara Black, Josh, Miss Dell, and Michael, are those quick enough?
Sure.
Because I worry that we have long executive sessions.
Yeah, okay.
Did you speak to that?
Sure.
So I, I think we can do them fairly efficiently, but I do feel like I need to say, on behalf of my other staff who are here for the executive session, that that will be delaying them.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there's people here that are here.
I like them better. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I don't, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. That's fine, I didn't know that. So that's fine.
Yeah, so that's the reason why.
Okay, so we have to make the executive session quick.
Yeah, so, would you like to make the motion to?
Make it quick.
Yeah, and to move into executive session, that would be helpful.
I have a question for executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically to discuss the resolution of a union grievance involving a personnel-related matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So this requires a roll-call vote of the school committee. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
May I do it, Maclew?
Yes.
Ms. Molly Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. Rebecca Buzansky?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Laura Fallon?
Yes.
Ms. Anne Hattsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lon Cawthon?
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Yes.
And Susan Voss?
Yes.
Okay, so I just need to let the public that's here know that we will be moving next door into the library to conduct an executive session, because to discuss these personnel matters in public would be detrimental to our bargaining position, and also to let you know that we will return back to this open session meeting, so we will not adjourn, we'll still be coming back. So, thank you. Welcome back to the Thursday, September 12, 2019, meeting of the Northampton School Committee. We are now reconvening in open session, after having been in executive session. We now move on to the rest of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is announcements. Are there announcements from members of the school committee? Ms. Hattsey?
As some of you know, as a member of the school committee, there's one member, and it's me, who's a member of the board of the Northampton Community Television, which is no longer Northampton Community Television, but rather Northampton Open Media, and on October 18th, you are all, as well as the entire public, is welcome to a relaunch party at their Holly Street facility. And again, it's Northampton Open Media, it'll be 6:30 to 9 o'clock, and they'll have presentations, some films, food and drink, and some music, so.
Excellent. Ms. Buzansky?
Yes, as the liaison to the Northampton Prevention Coalition, I just want to announce that they are having a health expo titled Hidden in Plain Sight on October 2nd, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., also at Holly Street. And I think that they have really just done a great job of pulling together a lot of educational information for, it's for adults only, so that parents, caregivers, community members can really learn about what are the signs, what are the day, everyday signs that we overlook all the time that says that our kids are in trouble and, and need help. And so I really want to encourage people, I think it's going to be a great event, and they are going to have snacks and prizes in, in addition to everything else, but they're going to have a lot of really useful information, and you can just come whenever you want, walk through, and go, and just try to educate our whole community about how we can be sort of helping our kids, and what we should be looking out for when they're in trouble, so.
Ms. Fallon?
As the vice chair for Division 5 for the NISC, I just wanted to remind you all that on September 28th at 9:00 a.m., we're co-sponsoring, along with the Minority Caucus and Division 9, a workshop called Becoming More Engaged Inclusive Educational Leaders: Pathways for Supporting Our LGBTQ Students. It's free, but we ask that you register online, so that we know how many people to expect, and it's 9 to 12, September 28th.
Springfield?
Yes.
Any other announcements? Okay, next we have a few recommended actions on our consent agenda. We have the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of August 8th, 2019, and we do not have any field trips, and we do not have any budget transfers, so it's really just the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
To approve the consent agenda, a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. We'll now move into reports and recommendations, and while it's not on here, I did want to take a moment to recognize our new student representative to the school committee, Eleanor Harden, who's joining us this school year. Welcome, Eleanor, and if you wanted to just, typically, there'll be a report that you'll give, but if you want to just give, introduce yourself and let the public know who you are, and if you have any other words.
Yeah, sure. I'm Eleanor Harden, I'm a senior at Northampton High School. I'm a member of the student union, and so this year I'm going to be the school committee representative for that group. We had our first meeting of the year yesterday night. I don't know if you want me to, I have a few notes, if you want me to?
Sure.
Discuss them, sure. So, some of the things that we talked about yesterday that we're planning on working on this year are, so, I'll just kind of list those things. We were really concerned about the vaping issue at our school, and I think possibly at JFK, given that, like, the recent, you know, news of, you know, all these, like, deaths and really serious illnesses resulting from this whole vaping thing, you know, it's becoming more of a concern, we think, and because it is such a prevalent issue at our school right now, it's something that we really want to work on in the coming year. You know, we tried a little bit putting up posters, you know, talking with administration about it this past year, but we really wanted to make it like a more serious issue for us to work on this year. Another thing, we're going to continue working on changing the sex ed curriculum for the wellness classes that we worked on last year. Those Community Waldmen and Brighid Goggins are really working hard on that, so, those are one of the, that's one of the things that we're going to keep working on. Another thing that we would really like to work on and keep a top priority this year is kind of working on, and like, just discussing and becoming aware of, at least in the beginning stages, of like the diversity and, like, diversity and achievement gap at our school. Last year, we sent out a survey, just asking students of Northampton High School what their main issues were, and that was actually the number-one issue for all students, and it was something that last year kind of got, you know, lost, and we didn't get to focus on it that much, and so this year we'd like to focus on it, you know, a lot more, and make that a top priority. We're planning for that to reach out to the Students of Color Alliance at our school, and also Reel, which is like a, yeah, I'm sure you guys know what it is. So, those are some of, like, the beginning things that we're thinking of doing. Also, we endorse the climate strike for next Friday, the 20th of September, which a couple of our members are really working hard to work on that and develop that. Just some school-wide updates, we have our first football game tomorrow night, auditions for the Romeo and Juliet play that's happening are, I think, next week, and then there's the climate strike on Friday, freshman elections for, you know, class officials and student union members are, is next Tuesday. Last night, there was a senior parents' meeting, and also next Thursday, there's going to be a financial aid meeting for the senior parents. So, those are just kind of some updates about the school, what's going on there. Yeah, that's kind of what we're thinking of working on, and, you know, definitely there'll be more, like, in-depth details to consider.
Thank you very much, Eleanor, we appreciate that. Look forward to having you serve with us.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it, too.
Thank you. Okay, so, next we have a report on the exciting Farm-to-School Grant, and I believe that, what's that?
Miss Dell had to leave.
Oh, Miss Dell had to leave, okay. Is there someone else here? Oh, Mr. Michael will be here to present on it. Excellent, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. Good evening, I'm Michael Skilcorn, I'm the director of programs at Grow Food Northampton, and as I'm sure you all know at this point, we recently received an award from the USDA for farm-to-school programming in partnership with public schools. So it's very exciting, and I can answer any questions about that. I wanted to give a little background and context as to how we came to apply for that and get it first. Also, as many of you know, the school gardens have been happening here at the elementary schools so successfully for maybe going on 10 years. Six years ago, Grow Food Northampton started bringing students out to the farm, Crimson and Clover, and our community garden, and three years ago, we started doing classroom cooking workshops during the winter in all of the elementary schools. And then last year, with the hiring of Ms. Hannah, started to bring in more local food into the cafeteria and food service. So, about a year and a half ago, myself and Ms. Buzansky, and Ms. Hannah, and Hope Garnier, who's the school sprouts coordinator for the school gardens, we got together, and we sort of looked around and realized that there's a lot happening in Northampton Public Schools that can fall under this umbrella of farm-to-school. We weren't calling it farm-to-school, I don't think, and that is a term that basically encompasses anything that's connecting students to healthy food, either through the cafeteria, either through the classroom, through school gardens, and we decided to try to bring everybody together who was participating in these farm-to-school programs or excited about them, so we organized a summit last April, we had a farm-to-school summit. We did not know how it would go, but it was, I think, immensely successful. We had, I think, over 50 people there, a complete cross-section of the community here for Northampton Public Schools, the superintendent attended, we had elected officials, and Joe Comerford and Lindsay Savadosa, we had teachers from every level of the schools here, we had parents, we had city council people, school committee members as well, so we really realized that, wow, there is a lot of energy and excitement behind this idea of farm-to-school. Some people were involved in the different segments of it, but we all realized that we're all working towards similar goals. So, from that experience, we got a lot of feedback from the group about what they would want to see in terms of the future, the vision for how farm-to-school could go. So Grow Food Northampton, with the public schools, applied for this USDA grant to get some funds behind this work, and very excited that we were successful in getting awarded that. So it's a two-year grant for a little over $97,000, and the big buckets of money that it's going to support are And the big buckets of money that it's going to support are continuing classroom workshops and field trips that Grow Food Northampton provides. There is season extension equipment for all of the school gardens at the elementary schools. There is money for programming to extend the work up into the middle and high schools, which was a very clear priority for everybody at the summit. The elementary schools are the ones with the gardens and the programming that Grow Food Northampton does. Everybody wanted to see, how can we keep that going? So there's not just a cliff when students get to JFK or the high school. So that's in there. And then another large bucket is for food service. And Miss Del is not here, but I can talk a little bit about her priorities, and that is first, equipment. So when she started here, she was thinking about making a butternut soup and realized that in the cafeterias and the kitchens, there's no blenders to make soup with. So she has a small list of equipment items that will enable her to do more scratch cooking, buy more from local farms, whole vegetables that she can then cut up and make into food using new vegetable wedgers, and also professional development for her staff in order to learn how to make certain recipes or do more scratch cooking. And then also, staff support for her so that she can try to bring in more locally sourced food or promote or market her meals and hopefully increase participation in school meals. Then the final piece of the grant is continuing to coordinate sort of this new network of stakeholders that are really interested in this work. So that will be a piece of it. We'll be doing another summit. There is a team from the district, actually not related to the grant, but that will be participating in a planning process called the Mass Farm to School Institute. And superintendent is on that team, and Miss Buszansky's on that team, Miss Del's on that team, and teachers from the elementary school, middle school, and high school as well. So what's exciting for me about that is that it's really putting the core of the planning of what's going to happen with farm-to-school squarely within the district. So it's not Grow Food Northampton or School Sprouts necessarily shepherding this, but really, it's the district and people within the district taking ownership and moving this forward. So that will be happening over the course of this year as well. And yeah, I think that's all I got. So happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Does anyone have any questions about it?
Or comments or concerns?
Can I just add to it?
Yes.
So I just really want to thank Michael and Grow Food Northampton for really taking the lead. Michael wrote the USDA grant. When we all sat down to brainstorm it, we really thought there was not a chance we would ever get it, which kind of frees up your thinking. That was fun. So I was very excited that we actually got the grant and to be part of Mass Farm to School Institute. I think it's going to be great for us to have two days with such a power-packed group from the district to really think about and plan for farm-to-school. I'm really sorry that Miss Del Hannah had to leave because, you know, the stars have really aligned, but one of the biggest stars is Miss Del Hannah in this whole process. And she has really come into our district, she started a year ago, right, and really brought all of this farm-to-school knowledge and interest and just enthusiasm with her. And one of the things she shared at the Farm to School Summit that I found striking just nine months into her tenure or less was that she'd moved the district from buying 2% local to 14% local, and that was with none of this extra sort of, these resources that we really do need. So it's really exciting to think about, you know, how far we can go with this. So just a big thank you to you, Michael, and Grow Food Northampton, and to Miss Del because we're very, I just feel very lucky to have her and help make, move this whole thing forward. So it's great.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership, too, Ms. Buszansky, on this. Ms. Fallon.
Is there any idea when the second Farm to School Summit will happen?
Not specifically. We haven't talked about it.
Next spring.
Next spring.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think at this point, the team that is assembling for this Mass Farm to School Institute will be the core committee essentially that is planning these things. And I am the coach of that team, so I'll be there helping to facilitate. The institute is happening in mid-October, so we will talk more about the year's plans and when the summit can happen. We did it in April, April 6th this year.
Mr. Moore.
This is a question, really sort of passing on, a question that somebody asked me the other day. Is there any either current or plans for collaboration with UMass in terms of either their food service or their ag school?
It's definitely been floated. There are no, that I know of current plans on how to go about doing that. We do know some folks that work in food service, for example, that we can reach out to, but no specifics at this point.
Mr. Coffey.
So I want to join everybody in thanking you and thanking various people that were involved. Dr. Provost, it sounds thrilling that you were involved in some of these meetings and stuff. And so do you have a vision for where this is going to go? Is this a commitment that you would like to make, or is this something that you're thinking about we can expand on? It's, I know it's, it's new and exciting, but sometimes without leadership support it doesn't, doesn't continue. Is there anything you can hint towards what your feeling is on this?
Sure. My vision is really to follow Miss Del on this. I honestly wouldn't be spending a weekend at Hancock Shaker Village talking about farm-to-school if Miss Del and also Miss Buszansky didn't say, this could be really great, let's do it. And, you know, the results they've gotten so far have been amazing. Obviously, Miss Del is the expert in this area, and my job is just to empower her and see how far she can take it.
That's great. Thank you.
You could ask him about his first job at some.
Oh, that's right.
That's a story that's very.
Was it agriculture-related?
It was. It was at Agway.
Oh, Agway. Okay, yeah. In Northampton or?
No, no, it was Palmer. It was part of the same shop, though.
Okay.
I got to drive the truck back and forth.
Any, any other questions? Thank you so much, and thank you to Grow Food Northampton for your collaboration.
You're having me great.
Excellent. Thank you. So we were excited and thrilled about a $97,000 grant. Now we're going to hear about a $697,000 grant. And this is, this is a report on the FY20 Commonwealth Free School Partnership Initiative Grant, and I know Josh and Barbara are here, and the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So talking about not thinking that we were ever going to get to grant, or in general, Barbara was here a little over a year ago presenting the strategic plan that had been put together with community stakeholders. And we had sort of three or four different versions of what we were hoping to accomplish should funding ever become available in the state. And we were lucky enough to sort of plan for our Gold Star option last January, and then we applied again this June after not receiving an award during the first round. And to our surprise, persistence has paid off, and we were part of Cohort 2. And so the goals of our grant this year are really to form partnerships and alignment with three of our community partners. So Sunnyside Childcare, People's Institute, as well as Community Action Head Start are our three partners. And our hope is to really offer increased access for our youngest learners and also to reduce the transition that our students have to experience. So during our current setup, our students who receive special education services often spend half of their time in a community preschool and half of their time in art preschool, which is great because we love to see them and have them participate, but it's also not ideal. And so what the grant has allowed us to do is really expand the participation that they have in their community preschools by providing itinerant special education services. So our OT, PT, behavioral supports, as well as speech and language pathologists, will be able to go to the community preschools instead and offer those services there. And then one of the other biggest pieces of the grant is professional development and transportation for our high-needs students. And so transportation, if you can believe, is extremely expensive. Our retirement plan will be to open up a transportation company. But last year, we spent.
I won't be a driver.
Last year, we spent close to $1,000 on preschool transportation alone, just because of the amount that each run takes and because we have to split day also. And so the grant has given us, at first, we thought it was $40,000. Come to find out, upon review of our budget, it turned out to be $51,000 in transportation funds, which is great. And so we're very excited. We'll be coming to you in a few weeks with some new job descriptions for some of the positions that the grant is allowing us to hire, and also be posting shortly the staff positions at Bridge Street School. And I do have to share a little bit of a story. So today, I was at an IEP meeting at Bridge Street School, and I was on my way out the door, and one of our custodial staff stopped me and congratulated us because he was so excited that we were going to have another preschool class. And he said, I will do whatever you need me to do to help. And on top of that, he was thrilled that they were going to be there a little bit after our school day. So part of the grant is also that we will have before and after-school care for that particular classroom, which will be great for our families who are working as well. And so he said, I can't wait for them to be here until 5:00, which was just so remarkable. And he was just genuinely thrilled at the idea that we were going to have more students. And so that was very refreshing and just heartwarming to have at the end of the day.
So I'm going to just add a little bit because I can never help myself. So as Josh said, we didn't really expect to get this because the priority, there were three priorities of districts, three tiers, that were eligible to apply for the grant. You had to have had one of the strategic planning grants, which we had. And then districts that had, I don't know, I think it was more than 60% low-income, free and reduced, were the highest priority. Then between 42 and 59 was the next, and between 25 and 41 was, and we're at about 40%. So, you know, so we were not in the priorities, but, but obviously, they thought it was okay. And so that was pretty lucky for us. And I think, I mean, people worked really hard on it, and, and it, it's a two-year grant, which the first year is $697 and change, and the second year, I think, is $625. And the state wants, you know, they want to know what local funds are going to go into it. And basically, a lot of local funds are going into it to start with because all of, you know, each of the participating programs is, or either have, well, they have the cost of running the program. We're not creating additional classrooms. We're creating some additional slots, and as Josh said, creating alignment and continuity. And, you know, and then our classroom that is going to be full day is, is one that's a half-day now, so that it's, you know, we already are putting, as a community, a lot into it. So I'm optimistic, I don't know why, but that after the two years, that the state understands, that the Department of Early Education and Care understands that, that communities will still need support. There were five years' worth of what were called preschool expansion grants, PEG grants, in five communities in the state, and those ended, it was a federal grant, those ended on June 30th or August 31st, I'm not sure which, of this year. But the state is continuing to fund them, even though they said to all those cities, well, go find the money because we're not, you're not going to, you know, this grant ends. But then they, they got it, that they can't just say, go find the money, because the money is not just floating free. So anyway, so I'm trying to be optimistic that, that we'll continue to get some support, and also that the, the professional development that's offered and all of this can spread to other, to all of the community-based programs in, in, in Northampton, so that it would start with those three, but that hopefully folks from other programs will participate in the professional development and that we will have more alignment across the city. So, anyway.
That's it? That's all I got?
Do you guys have any questions for us? Yes. Any comments or questions from the school committee? Yes, Ms.?
I'm, I'm just so thrilled. This is one of the most exciting things that have come along, and we know how important early education is onwards. So thank you for just trying and trying again and continuing to try even when people say no.
Absolutely. We weren't going to give up.
We weren't. And actually, when we spoke with the liaison from the Department of Early Education and Care, we called her with a question, and, and, you know, Josh and I both said, oh, we're so excited. We, you know. Her response was, well, persistence pays off. But, okay.
Ms. Fallon.
I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations, and it's fantastic news. I so appreciated the presentation you gave earlier this year, I think it was, and to see it come through so quickly in some ways is, I share your excitement. And I just wonder, and there may not be an answer to this, but looking forward, it sounds like it's for two years, are there things that we as a school committee should be thinking about to support the growth? Because the better this does, I think the better chances are that it will continue to be supported. And maybe you don't have an answer tonight, but I just encourage you to let, help us think about things that we might want to talk about, too, to, to really support it.
We don't have an answer yet, but I'm sure that during the budget discussions, it will happen. It'll be something that we talk.
I think one of the most exciting parts of this is, is, and I think lots of us have been saying this for years, that all of the kids in, whatever, whatever program they're in in preschool, whether they're in, in the public schools, or they're in, you know, they're at Meadowlark or Sunnyside or People's Institute, or wherever they are, they're all our kids. And so this is really acknowledging that in a lot of ways. And it's, it's, you know, it's not just, they're not our kids just when they get to kindergarten. Because only about 25% of our kindergarteners have been in the public school preschool. So that means 75% of them have been somewhere else. And, you know, and they, and they are our kids. So this is sort of exciting to have this opportunity.
Mr. Coffey.
Yeah, I just wanted to add real quick, as obviously, for obvious reasons, this conversation and the result was a topic of conversation in my house, and everything that came up was Josh and Barbara, Josh and Barbara, Josh and Barbara. This is all you and all the work that you put into it. So I appreciate you giving thanks to other folks, but I think we, and I can certainly thank you and greatly appreciate it for the extra hours you put in, knowing that it was a long shot. It's, I've been there myself, and it's, it's really stupendous what you guys put into it. So thank you. The other thing I want to mention real quick regarding the other PEG grants, there's, there was a pretty comprehensive evaluation done by AAR, and I don't know if you've seen the results, I've only seen snippets of it, but it definitely shows beyond, you know, additional slots for kids, more convenience for parents, et cetera. All the other aspects combined, the evidence is showing the enhanced quality of it has led to what we all want, which is kids entering kindergarten and first grade better prepared than they would have been otherwise, and certainly compared to their comparison groups. That's what the study is beginning to show. So everything, everything, everybody said, and just the fact that we got this, and it's a lot of money. It's affected a lot more money, twice as much as I thought it was, because I didn't know it was a year, too, is just, yeah, I reiterate what everybody else said. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you so much again, and congratulations, and we look forward to hearing about different. Okay. Continuing with our grants theme, we have, Ms. McLaughlin is here to give us a report on a skilled capital grant, $133,879,000.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'm here to present about an amazing opportunity that we were afforded through the state awarding us that large sum of money to continue from the skills capital funding. It's not every day that we get to stand and shake hands with the Lieutenant Governor, but Dr. Provost and I were able to do just that when we were accepting the grant. And we were also able to hear a lot about how the importance of assisting in closing the workforce gap. We were able to hear from many members of the executive branch about this idea of really training students at, at the high school, middle school, and all the way up in being prepared not only just for college, but for entering the workforce. And we heard a lot about that there were areas of need, specifically in IT, where even in this area, there's about 500 open jobs in the IT industry. in this area, there's about 500 open jobs in the IT industry. And so we were given the opportunity through this capital funding to actually be able to train our students here in North Hampton to go on to college, go on to careers, and really be competitive in the marketplace. So more than that, though, we also were able to stand there among 45 other awardees elected from the entire Commonwealth, which was really pretty exciting. Especially for us, we were a public school amongst a lot of colleges, at community colleges, and many vocational schools. And we were one of four that were newly awarded this award. So that was exciting, too. And so what does this really mean? Many of you know that we have an IT Pathways program in the high school, and so that's where our students get a lot of different opportunities to train in IT, get early exposure to see if this is a career they're interested in. They get early college, career, college and internship opportunities in this. Right now, our program has just shy of 40 students, and it's really quite a blend of girls and boys, which is great. We also have, we've been able to have many different schools who have come actually to talk to us. They've been directed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to come and look at our program and see how it is that they can shape what they're doing similar to the way we are. So that's been really exciting. And we've also had our students ask to participate on statewide panels, which has been great, been really exciting for them. But even more importantly, our first group just finished their first round of internships. They were kind of out in the city in different businesses. And in that, one of them got offered a job during the summer, sorry, after the summer experience, so he's working during the school year. And we also had one of our early, as we say, pilot people, our pilot Innovation Pathway students, just accept a full-time position working for the school's IT department. And when she had started, she was like going in theater and then totally changed the direction that she was going. So that's been really exciting as well. In addition, we have, we had two students also that, part of this idea of the IT exploration is really exposing yourself early on before you go out and, you know, invest in career or college experiences. And we had two students who went through the program almost all the way through and then decided, you know, even after their internship, "Hey, this has been really great, but this is a career option that we, you know, aren't as interested in anymore," which is also important. That's really what we want them to do at this early age before investing in, you know, a four-year or, you know, longer degree. So that was exciting, too, even though we lost two great members of our team. But this particular grant, the goal of this is to expand upon the Innovation Pathway and provide additional opportunities in setting up what's called a Cisco Academy at the high school. And so what that means is we really are striving to continue to expand the program of Innovation Pathway. And in the current option, this class, our new academy, has currently enrolled 17 students, many of whom aren't IT Pathway students. Some of them are older than when the Pathway's options were available for them, and some are early freshmen that maybe through this course may decide, "Oh, this is something we're interested in," and taking the route of the Innovation Pathway after that. We, by doing this program, were able to train more students in professional opportunities that are sought after. The brand Cisco, many of you probably have heard, it's one of these very high-end companies that does a lot with technology. And in doing so, by having our students get exposed to this early, even with our own IT department, they were like, "Ooh, they get to work on Cisco equipment." They learn kind of like that top tier of what it means in IT to work with servers, networks, and et cetera. And so it's a highly respected company. A lot of people in the professional industry get certifications, Cisco certifications. I'm even in a grad class that is a preparation for a Cisco certification test. And this class, while we're looking at this initial class, it does offer students that opportunity to get those, that early exposure, but also certification. So that's pretty exciting, too. The other neat thing about it is, you know, if you look in the area, there's only about one traditional high school in the area that has Cisco Academy. And so this in Western Mass in there, maybe, there's a large number of like vocational schools, again, that have this, but really, we're standing out amongst others of saying, like, "Here we are, and we are offering this credentialing." And some of the schools that have students that go through it have had their graduates go right on to work for like Children's Hospital, banks, Boston Public Library. I mean, these are the types of programs that really set you apart. And IT is one of those areas that you can go and get college credentials in, but you can also often go in with a high school degree. So again, it's this idea of getting this preparation and getting that exposure early and then going out and making your way in the world in an industry that is certainly recognized as a need. There's, even in our own region, it's considered a priority field based on the regional market, labor market blueprint. So that's really exciting for us. So needless to say, all of us are really excited for this. It provides students a rich experience before they even leave to depart to higher ed or to different career experiences. And it allows us to continue to shine as a lighthouse community in educating students in a field that's really booming in both, not only the Commonwealth, but really across the nation and even globally. So we're super excited about this opportunity and thankful that the state is recognizing the importance of this and helping us move forward in that. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Yes?
Just after all three presentations, I feel like when the budget was approved this summer, it felt pretty grim, like we were facing a loss in federal funding and a loss in net state aid. And I never expected to be in the position where we've got all these grants awarded. And I just, I can't tell you how much I appreciate not just our district leaders, but also our community leaders for going out there and having the vision and the dedication and securing these grants, because it's amazing that despite the lack of support from the state and federal governments, in many ways, that we're able to continue moving the district forward and providing all these amazing opportunities for our students and their families. So thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. McGoughlin. Congratulations. Okay. So now we have a donation. This is from the Jackson Street School PTO, $15,000. Did you want to give us any information about this?
The only thing that I wanted to let you know, this is from the Jackson Street PTO. They are having a donation of $15,000 for the year. They do usually three different checks during the course of the year, so if we could approve it once for the year, when the other two checks come in, that way I wouldn't need to bring them back to the committee. And it's for the general gift and classroom supplies and hardware materials for the classrooms that we use for.
Okay. So would someone make a motion on this? Someone quick?
Move to accept the gift from Jackson Street PTO in the amount of $15,000.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, excellent. So thank you to Jackson Street PTO. Next, we have a couple of items. First one is a report. This is from Dr. Chevers on the Middle School Math Pilot.
That's what I do. It's the light switch. I turn it on and off. One shot. You just took it from me.
I was sitting here thinking, you just...
Good evening. It is always my pleasure to share about our professional development activities in the schools. And we have lots going on, but tonight, we're going to specifically talk about mathematics. We're going to begin by, first, I want to introduce my team that's here tonight. I want to introduce, this is Rachel Stably-Hale, who is the department chair at North Hampton High School Math. And this is Jim Hanson, who is our mathematics coach, grades three through eight. I also want to recognize Beth, Beth Adams, who is a teacher at the high school. And all of these people are members of the Vertical Math Team, as well as Leslie Wilson, principal of JFK Middle School. We're all members of the Vertical Math Team. We've been meeting for several years now to develop professional development plans. So I'm going to begin by talking about the professional development for summer of 2019. And I want to begin with another grant story. All of the stipends for this professional development were paid for from a competitive grant that we applied for. So that was, that was really helpful. It made it possible. It's very expensive to pay for teachers, but so worthwhile to pay for teachers to come to summer professional development. These teachers gave up three full days of their summer to come to this professional development. So that shows real dedication. The participants at this professional development, we had, let's see, all but two math teachers from JFK Middle School. So we had a lot of people from JFK, grades six through eight, and we had many, many special educators. We had even a fifth-grade teacher who was interested in working on the transition between fifth grade and sixth grade, who was Travis Jagazinski, and he's also a member of the Vertical Math Team. And then we had every single ninth-grade math teacher from the high school join us for this professional development. So the topic was five practices for orchestrating productive mathematics discussions. And the purpose was to assist teachers in using students' responses to advance mathematical understanding, to move understanding forward, and to make instructional decisions. And then the five math practices are, one, anticipating likely student responses to challenging mathematical tasks and questions from students; monitoring students' responses to the tasks while students work in pairs and groups; selecting particular students to present mathematical work; sequencing the student responses that will be displayed in a specific order; and then connecting different students' responses and connecting the responses to key mathematical ideas. Clearly, this professional development was deep and needed a highly trained professional to conduct it. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Rachel and Jim to talk a little bit about their experiences in these two separate professional development experiences. We had two providers. We had Sandy Madden from the University of Massachusetts Mathematics Department, and we had Mike Flynn from Mount Holyoke. He's the chair of the math education program. And so those were our providers. And Jim and Rachel are going to talk a little bit about their experiences with this professional development. So, Rachel?
Hi, good evening. So I want to say that I'm in my 13th year here in the North Hampton Public Schools, and this was by far the most rich and productive professional development experience that I've had here. To be able to work closely with my colleagues for three consecutive days on practices that we know will have a direct impact on students' experiences in our classroom was an extraordinarily rewarding experience. We very rarely have such an extended period of time to work together. And this framework, the five practices, was directly applicable to the work that we're doing. So our curricular approach at the high school involves having students work collaboratively. And managing rich discourse around mathematics in a heterogeneous classroom is really difficult work. And for those of us who started teaching with a more direct instruction approach, who maybe have less experience managing student discourse in a math class, this was a really invaluable experience. We have varying levels of comfort working in a classroom like that within my department. And so to get us all to the table, to be able to not just share in the expertise of Sandra Madden, but also each other's expertise, was truly invaluable. So Sandy has a lot of experience with supporting classrooms engaged in this kind of discourse. She works with teacher candidates at UMass in the STEP program. And she also has deep knowledge of the curriculum, the Core Plus Mathematics Program that we're using at the high school. So to be able to work with someone who knew a lot about our curriculum and also a lot about the practices that best support our curriculum was really a dream come true. And I can say that everyone in the department left that experience feeling really energized about starting the year. There's this kind of buzz Beth was talking about, you know, at lunch, people are sharing ideas and talking about their experiences and saying, "Oh, I tried this thing, and this is how it worked, and hey, I've got this great idea, let me share it with you." And I think there's this sense of sort of revitalization and just excitement in the department now as a consequence. And we're all really looking forward to the follow-up work that will come with this, because we know that this is a big project, and it's something that we have been really desirous of doing this kind of work around. So we're really grateful to have had this opportunity and excited to be continuing this work. And especially exciting to be continuing this work in collaboration with the middle school, because they're engaged in the same type of work. And so for us to be working together and creating a more unified approach to teaching and learning mathematics at the secondary level is literally a dream come true for me. So the whole time that I've been in the district, one of the things that I've most wanted is to have a more unified and coherent approach to how we teach mathematics in the North Hampton Public Schools. And it's really exciting to feel like that's happening now. So I'm just so grateful that we've had the opportunity to do this work and excited to continue it.
So, hi, everyone. I want to talk just a little bit about Mike Flynn's work with the middle school, because the two groups were actually separated during the PD. But there was very, you know, there's a lot of commonalities between what Rachel just told you about and what happened with the middle school. As a little bit of a background, Mike Flynn comes highly recommended and is somebody who has had a personal influence on me. I attended the Mathematics Leadership Program at Mount Holyoke, which is a highly regarded, highly renowned mathematics professional development community. Many of you might be familiar with the Summer Math Institute that had been taking place at Mount Holyoke way back into the 80s, where countless numbers of teachers from elementary on up through high school were trained, and specially trained, in professional development and mathematics. I guess back in the day, they used to actually spend all that time in the dorms together talking about mathematics. And a lot of these teachers were folks who weren't necessarily there, coming from a place of a lot of knowledge of mathematics. Well, Mike Flynn has taken that Summer Math Institute and some of the energy around that and taken it into the 21st century with a master's program. It's been, you know, certainly transformational for me. It's what brings me here today as the math coach for North Hampton. So in the course of this particular professional development, he worked with the middle school teachers to help them finely craft lessons that would bring up student voice. And it's research-backed as just a very important way of getting mathematical ideas out to a community of students. And it's a challenging idea. It's very different from the way most of us in this room learn mathematics. But these five practices are research-backed as well. They come originally from the University of Pittsburgh. The authors of the book, Mary K. Stein and Peg Smith, are nationally regarded through the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Their original first edition of this book came out back in the 90s, and I've been to a few workshops at NCTM that, where they've talked about these five practices. But it was really through Mike's finely crafting of the three days that brought this to life for our middle school teachers. And I will, you know, kind of say the same thing that Rachel just said about what I've heard is reflections from these teachers. After the first day, I remember meeting one of the teachers who, you know, I'm just getting to know some of these folks, but in the parking lot, who was just elated. And here it was, you know, mid-August, again, giving up some summer, but elated after one day working with Mike Flynn and just getting all sorts of jazzed up for the year. I've also had the privilege, in the first few weeks of school, of starting to see this in action, starting to see students, maybe even some who I saw. I was in a sixth-grade class the other day, and I saw some who in fifth grade maybe were a little reluctant or shy to share some of their math ideas, coming up to the document projector, sharing some really pretty outstanding and phenomenal sorts of math ideas to their classmates. So it's already working its way into action. And, you know, I can't say enough about how it's really getting us off to a really nice start here, you know, as far as getting the role of student voice into mathematics class.
And just for your reference, this is what the book looks like, the five practices for orchestrating productive mathematics discussion. And I also just want to say another word about Sandy Madden and Mike Flynn. We required a professional development provider for the high school that did know both the components of the program that we used, as well as the five math practices. components of the program that we used, as well as the five math practices. And finding a provider who was high-quality and able to deliver both of those pieces was not an easy thing. We could have flown people in from Arizona ASCD. We could have flown people in from Nashville and other places in the country. But we chose to go local, because these people gave us an excellent, high-quality experience. I would also mention that when we go with somebody local, we all, most of the time, we get more than what is looked at as an hourly rate. Sandy Madden met with us at least three times, at least, for well over a half a day. She actually took an entire day and spent that day at the high school to gain some insight before she met with me yet again to craft the experience at the high school. And then she's meeting with Jim again to help craft an experience that the teachers are going to be having on the 18th. Those are not billable hours. Those are hours that she is giving above and beyond, or you can consider it part of the package that we're getting. Mike Flynn has also met with me on numerous occasions and is also meeting with Jim again to carefully craft these experiences for teachers. When at all possible, we always try to use local people, because we get that experience of crafting face-to-face, and we always get a really good, you know, I guess bargain, because we're able to spend more time. So I just wanted to mention the extra time and recognize Mike and Sandy for their extra time for this work.
One slide?
Yes, let's see. So the plans moving forward are such that Mike and Sandy are going to continue their work with the faculty. And they're going to function in a couple of different capacities. Number one, they're going to provide a little more, I would call it, direct professional development on the 18th. That's actually going to be Sandy. And we're going to bring all of the teachers together, six through 12, with special ed teachers. Everybody, all the math teachers are together. And we have a very specially crafted event for them on that day. And I think that is truly one of the most important things, to bring the middle school and the high school together. We're working very hard at aligning and crafting experiences for our students and for our curriculum that are aligned and in both strategy and with the standards. So this is going to be a very important day. And then, this is probably one of the best parts, Sandy and Mike are going to spend some time in classrooms with teachers one-on-one. And they will be both at the middle school and the high school, working with teachers. And then, another bonus is such that Rachel and Jim, and actually Tim Levy, the department chair of math at the middle school, will also be able to spend shoulder-to-shoulder time with them, doing, leading peer observations and walkthroughs, so that they can also continue their professional learning. And again, this is something that is unique to the experiences of these particular professional development providers. This is something that we're planning, and there's a lot of conversation around that that we likely wouldn't get if we were flying somebody in from very far away. So grateful for those experiences. So that is the professional development section of this presentation. I had a few other things that I wanted to mention about professional development that I thought by virtue of the comments that were shared earlier that you might find useful. Firstly, I want you to know that in the Northampton Public Schools, for the past several years, we have been working on growing our own professional development providers. This has been a goal of mine, it's a goal of the school, it's a goal of our professional development plan, to grow our own professional development providers. These are some of the ways that that is happening. Number one, we have two fundations, our Phonics-based program. We have two professionally-trained providers in our district now. They provide all of the professional development for grades K through three with our fundations, our Phonics program. And now that we're up and running with this professional training, we are actually getting people from other districts that are coming to our training and are paying, contributing to the training, so that, you know, we're actually making a little money on it, not a lot, but just a little bit. And I'm very proud to tell you that our teachers are delighted to do this work. They want to be leaders. So we are growing leaders with foundation, LLI, Level Literacy Intervention. We have our own trainers now. We worked on this a couple of years ago. So all of our LLI, Level Literacy Intervention, training is done in-house. We do not send people out anymore. And we also do all math recovery training. We have a math recovery champion in our district. She works primarily in the elementary schools. And here's the good news, we have another grant. We have a math recovery grant. And part of that grant is to provide teachers with what we call AVMR II, which is another, which is an additional math recovery experience. And recently, I was able to negotiate having our middle school interventionist pilot the very first program with math recovery in our middle school. Very exciting times. I wiggled her, I guess, into a grant, and she is going to be taking, getting her training for, actually, for free. And this is happening in Holyoke. I'd also like to mention the training and mention our curriculum teacher leaders. Our curriculum teacher leaders are highly-trained curriculum developers. I've trained them myself, and they've trained each other, and we're writing curriculum. That's something that we have been working on for quite some time. We do not hire out. We don't have anybody come in. We provide that and save all kinds of money. Our coaches, Jim and Andrew Samuelson, who's not here tonight, are literacy coaches. They are providing a lot of professional development around our literacy and math programs. Let's see. And I also want to talk about the newest thing that I'm trying this year. This, I'm calling it Homegrown PD. And so over the years, we've provided and/or I have conducted, and CTOs have conducted a lot of understanding-by-design curriculum writing. Part of that is our Common Summit of Assessments and Rubrics. So what I did this year is I created a folder of materials for each of the departments. So they have slides that are operational, there are the slides that are instructional that help guide them in this process of looking at their summative assessments in each of the units. And they also have some samples, materials, showing samples of Common Summit of Assessments and some instructions about how to write rubrics and how to write authentic performance-based assessments. Our teachers are on a real continuum. Some are experts in this, and others are real beginners. But this is the kit that I've created, and on Wednesday, our department chairs and CTOs will be leading these workshops in this homegrown professional development experience. Rather than having somebody come in, rather than hiring out, rather than sending out, we're saving money. But even more so, we're helping our leaders grow by giving them the experience of leading this professional development, which I feel very confident that they're able to do after having had the experiences they have had with professional development over the years. So I just, I wanted to point out all of these ways in which we are very careful about not only the money that we're spending, but how we're spending it, and the quality of professional development that we insist upon in this district, and the quality that our own leaders offer us as well. A few, well, I think that's probably enough detail about that. But if you have any questions about any of that, I would be happy to answer them before moving on to the pilot program, which is really exciting. Yes?
I just have a quick question. It was, I'm so glad you put it on the evaluations. It was great to see, we were so excited about it. When you're talking about doing this sort of alignment, and there's turnover, so you have new people entering the district, this may not have been part of that experience, what's our plan moving forward?
So that's why we have the leaders, the district leaders, that we do. When we have, let's say, a third-grade teacher leaves, now, you know, that person was trained, what do we do? Well, we have a trainer inside of our district. So that person, that new teacher, is trained using our in-house trainer. So that's how we're moving professional development along and staying consistent. That's the most important thing, is keeping up with that level, the high-quality level of professional development. It's hugely important. How are you going to do that? You can't maintain that by sending people out of the district all the time. You have to have a system, you have to have a plan, you have to be thoughtful about how you're going to supply that for yourself.
Thank you.
Ms. Voss?
Thank you. And it's really great to hear just how much the teachers were able to get out of this. I think last December, we were talking about math, and something I heard some of the teachers say in this room was, "We just need time to work together and talk to each other." And it's just really great to hear that's happening. And I'm glad to read, as Ms. Fallon said, that everybody found it so helpful. I do just have a question. So if a teacher comes in at any grade, I guess I'm thinking middle and high school, since that was the topic of this, certainly there's a curriculum and there's topics they're supposed to cover, and it fits within the state standards, but is it, can you just help me understand, it sounds like we also have this idea that, or I shouldn't say that. I'm wondering if we tell the teachers, okay, you have to say, do, I'll make up numbers, 50% of it, you have to teach them to work collaboratively, 50%, we're going to lecture. Like, how much does an individual teacher get to come in and say, "This is how I'm comfortable teaching. I'm good at, you know, doing it this way," versus how much of the professional development is more about how you should structure the learning environment? Does that question make sense? I'm just curious what the balance is and what, how much autonomy a given teacher has in their classroom versus, you know, the person who's been through different trainings is going to tell them, "No, you have to do it this way."
So there are many, many answers to that, so I will be very brief. But I could answer that question all night. So first of all, it depends on the subject area. For example, when talking about the five practices, we are asking teachers to take up an instructional sequence. We are asking teachers to adopt those strategies. But it's not that we're telling them exactly what lessons to teach and in what order, you know, that's the judgment that teachers have in their mathematics class. And of course, we're never, we have a curriculum, it is our guide, but we have students in front of us, and we teach, and we get feedback, and then we respond to that feedback by changing the instructional activity, whatever it might be, and then we continue on with that sequence. We assess, we learn what we need to do, we change the instructional sequence. That is the pattern of, I guess I would call it, modern instruction. And then when we give the summative assessment at the end, then that is something that a group of teachers could talk about and analyze and make decisions about curriculum. All of our decisions, I would say 90% of our decisions about curriculum, by the way, are really made by teachers. And I would consider that, Northampton, teachers have a tremendous amount of autonomy. We, yeah. Okay, you're welcome.
Pardon, sorry. I just feel like I ought to add a little bit, just in that, you know, I think, myself and my colleague Andrew Samuelson, as coaches, that's part of what we do. You know, what particularly resonated in your question was this idea of, you know, how much ought to be lecture and how much ought to be, you know, sort of student-independent work or whatever blend we have. That's where the instructional coach comes in. And I, you know, I kind of sort of tell it like it is and like I do my job, I guess. And I like to do that through collaboration and try to work with the teacher from wherever they are. And, you know, as the best I can, I try and really convince them that, hey, you know, if you stand and talk to them for 60 minutes, it's not going to work. And most of our teachers are very progressive and really willing to give these things a try, and also are very into this collaboration idea, you know. So anyway, just a little bit on that.
Yes, Ms. Anderson?
I really appreciate the presentation. And just as a teacher, I know you can't fake enthusiasm for PD.
True.
Yes. And I just felt that you really helped it. And so I really appreciate that. And the role of coaches is so important in this. And also, just anecdotally, I have a sixth and a seventh grader, and they're both, and I think, you know, it's from, I think it's from PD. I mean, they're talking mathematically more, and, I mean, you might know my kids, but it's not a common thing to talk about. But I really noticed it, and like this kind of little desire to talk about ARIAD. And I thought, wow, you know, things are really shifting a little bit. So I love that you love the PD and that you're here, and you don't have to be here to talk about it. And again, I know you weren't big in enthusiasm.
Thank you for saying that. And thank you for recognizing coaches and vertical team members. I can't tell you how privileged I am to work with these teachers. And they're not, you know, we, the vertical math team is huge. It's just such a pleasure to work with people who are so dedicated and so enthusiastic to the work. None of the decisions that I make about curriculum, about professional development are made in my office alone, with the door shut. Every single decision that I made, that I, I should say that we make, is a collaborative effort. So I think that's important.
Mr. Moore?
This is a question, just while we got you all here. How is the vertical alignment continuing with the elementary schools in terms of, you know, are kids arriving, arriving kind of where you expected them to be and that kind of thing?
I would say more and more so. Our math recovery program and our math investigations together are working very, very well. And, well, we'll share a little bit more about the alignment piece in just a moment when we talk about the pilot. And I think you'll be pleased with some of the things that we're going to be doing and have planned.
Thanks. Yes, Mr. Poppin?
So I think it was a year ago that we were collectively talking about the math study RFP, which lasted maybe two months. It was a tense time. And I think that, personally speaking, I learned a lot. I was really surprised by the number of educators that came and talked about how they felt disrespected and stuff. I met with you about that. I met with Rachel, I met with another teacher, Mr. Lombardi, I met with a couple of students, I met with a couple of parents. I just wanted to more deeply understand what was happening. And I remember talking about, what I learned was that no one really wanted to drop integrated math. Nobody wanted to drop the momentum we had. But what I did greatly appreciate was that everybody acknowledged that we can do better, and the teachers really wanted to do better. And they didn't like the RFP study approach, that was fine. They wanted more PD. And it just sounds like you guys hit a homerun. So I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the outcome of here. It feels great to know that you heard your teachers. I don't, you always do that, Nancy, so I don't, I'm just acknowledging that you heard from your staff, you heard what they needed, and you accommodated what they wanted. I almost feel a bit like we didn't do this last year and the year before and the year before, because it's a frustrating thing to continue to teach in a really, really challenging new curriculum with a lot of pressure from the outside, with a lot of negativity in the press, and not get the kind of support they need. So much thanks for that. With regard to, I mean, clearly, I appreciate you talking about the added value that the two professional development providers offered. From my perspective and from the information that I received, I didn't receive anywhere near that level of understanding as to what they were doing above and beyond the six hours they were contracted for. So the scope of work we received was virtually a sentence. And I think that hurts the process. If I had known what you explained, I would have had a much deeper and much more, a better understanding. I still would have appreciated probably a more transparent process to see if any other local people could provide the same thing. I still think I have a fiduciary responsibility for that. But I feel much better about the idea that we're not just spending money wildly because of all this other added work that they did and continued work. And I just didn't appreciate that, because frankly, that's not the information we received. So that's not your issue, but maybe I need to talk to you about these things ahead of time before I come up with a sense that there's something wrong, I can further investigate.
I also, we did look at other, other providers, and there were, there were no other providers that were as highly qualified and would give us the outcomes that we were looking for and who had the knowledge base in order to do so.
Well, the outcomes that you were looking for was key to me, absolutely key, and that's a, that's an ongoing frustration that I have when we seek people, is that I don't know what the outcomes are, and I think we need to do better there. So, if you knew what the outcomes were, then we have to figure out a way so that we know what we're paying for and that we can support you with it. And that's just not clear to me, most of the time, that we do contracts, that we're clear on what our expectations are and what we want, and yet I'm hearing you've already thought about that. So, it's just a communication thing. Somehow, we, I, I feel like we need to find out more about what we're paying for and what the anticipated expectations are. And sometimes I can request it and I don't get it, other times it's probably me not working as hard on it, so somehow, maybe you and I can talk offline and figure out a better way.
I, I don't recall getting a request, but I would be, I'm always happy to talk about professional development.
I, I know, I do.
My favorite topic. Okay, so I would like to move on to the more exciting part of the program, or I don't know, maybe it's as exciting. I want to talk about our math program selection process and what this is all about.
Nancy, can you move the mic?
Can everybody read that?
Can, NCT, can you all read it? Yeah? Okay.
So, first of all, I want to talk about, I want to talk about the selection team. And I would like to, yeah, our selection team and the need, the program criteria, et cetera, all of these, and the final three, the selection of the pilot plan. So, first of all, the need. So, why, why, what is the need for an updated math program, six through eight? Well, teachers were spending a lot of time and energy revising our, and reworking big ideas to make it work for students. While it's easy to add practice worksheets and group problems and other quick fixes, it's not easy to do so with a conceptual framework consistency. This is the, the task of people who devote their lives to this, long, long hours over several, several years, even decades. Teachers did not have time and do not have time to continue this practice. And in this light, we found that ed reports confirmed the lack of cohesion and conceptual math practices and big ideas to support knowledge, understanding, and skills. So, there was that issue. We also need a program that embraces the Massachusetts, Massachusetts framework and is theoretically aligned to the standards of mathematical practices. More importantly, we are in need of a program that supports the transitions between our fifth and sixth grade and eighth and ninth grade curricula with instructional consistency and standard alignment to support all learners. So, those were the, the contributing factors. So, our selection team, initially, the vertical math teams discussed and explored the issues with the lack of alignment and cohesion between the transitional years, years. And using the identified criteria, a smaller group was able to sift through about a dozen math programs to select three finalists, at least for the first round of reviews. And after the first three selections were made, the entire math department at JFK, including special educators, were eager to serve on the team. And I'll also tell you, we had fifth grade teachers, we also had high school teachers. We had a very crowded room of math reviewers, but it was all good. Steps to textbook adoption were reviewed, and we do have a textbook adoption process, and I won't read through all of it, but there's a very specific process of events that needs to happen that begins with selection of the, of the committee and determining alignment. We have very specific criteria for that. So, next, we met several times for at least an hour and a half, some days were even half days. Our team came out during the summer, after school was out, to meet, to review these materials. We had professional development provider, professional providers from companies come in and share their programs, and we had a very, very clear criteria selection. I'm not going to go into all the details right now, it's really late, but if somebody would like more details, I have a, a seven-page document that details all of these. But first of all, we asked ourselves, is this consistent with our district values? What are they? Building communities of engaged students, are all students engaged with this curricula? Enabling students, all students, not just some students, but all the students to reach their potential. Does it nurture kindness, empathy, and tolerance? And the tolerance piece was very important to us. We actually had a member from Reel come in and discuss this with us and, and review the program with us. We really wanted to be very thorough and very thoughtful with our selection. Was it consistent with our mathematics transfer goals, K through 12? I think you've all seen those. We celebrated those last year, and they're on our website. And then we looked at instructional design and content and standards alignment, we looked at assessments and assignments, we looked at equity and access, who can access this program? How do you get at it? And we looked at the instructional technology integration. Our final three choices were Open Up Resources, Carnegie Learning, and CPM. Open Up Resources won, hands down, unanimous. The entire room was all about Open Up Resources. And Open Up Resources has a lot of features to it. It is free, how about that? It's a free resource, it's a web, it's a, it's a web resource. But the professional development, of course, costs money, and that is the Open Up Resources I recently learned this week that Amherst is also looking at, and actually, I think they are adopting, I meet with them next week, Open Up Resources as well. This is a wonderful opportunity, this is what we like to do, share professional development between districts, and we, it also provides us opportunities for observations in both, and collegiality between both of the districts. So, that's a really great opportunity as well. And then, my favorite part about this is that if we end up adopting this, and we'll talk about the pilot plan in just a minute, we will have three programs that are all developed by the National Science Foundation, written by the members of the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and will be aligned with theory, instructional strategies, and practices. That's my job, that's why you hire me, and that, it is my privilege to do that work. So, let's talk about the pilot plan. So, the pilot plan for fall for the middle school, sixth grade teachers are going to use the Open Up Resources as their exclusive resource. This is exciting. Our sixth grade teachers, some of them, how many, two? Three teachers came with already having used this curriculum.
Oh, there were two.
There were two, okay, two out of the three teachers. So, they decided that they're going to use the sixth grade program to fidelity for this first year. Their exclusive resource. They're going to follow the scope and sequence, working through each of the lessons as designed. Seventh grade teachers are going to implement the Rational Number Arithmetic Unit from Open Up Resources during their Number System Unit in September, and these lessons will align with some of the standards in the Number System domain, which students perform below state. So, now, we're going to actually look at something that, ah, we're not doing so well in that area, let's, let's take a look and see what we can do, what this program does differently. How does the instruction, how is the instruction differ and will it help our students? Seventh grade teachers will also teach the Scale Drawings Unit in Open Up Resources prior to Ratio and, and Proportion. Will observe whether the physical models of proportional reasoning from the Scale Drawing Unit will result in improved reasoning during the Ratio and Proportional Unit. And this is a critical understanding in, in seventh grade mathematics, yes.
Includes all, includes special ed teachers?
Yes, yes, all of it, all of the training, thank you for asking that, all of the training and all of these plans and even the textbook selection, all special ed teachers and regular ed teachers, yes. Eighth grade teachers are going to use the Open Up Resources for their introductory unit, rigid transformations and congruence. Teachers will experience the lesson structure and, you know, they'll find out what that's like compared to what they've done in the past, and it'll give the teachers the opportunity to integrate the use of mathematical tools and technology, which is a key component of MCAS 2.0. And additional plans, Jim Hansen is going to support grades six through eight with the implementation of the pilot in collaboration with Tim Levy, as well as, you know, Mike Flynn is going to be around, and I'm sure that he will also contribute to conversations and thinking about this. And the vertical math team will continue to support the implementation of the plot, coming together once a month, talking about how this is all going, and particularly those transitional years between fifth and sixth and eighth and ninth. And then, the selection team plans to reconvene in November to review the implementation results and determine next steps. And from there, we'll see where we land. It could be, we need to review something else and we're not happy with this, or we could decide to, you know, to purchase and move forward with it. So, that's, that's the plan. Very exciting. Teachers were, are very enthusiastic about this curriculum, and Nat, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, they actually wrote this curriculum, teachers that belong to that organization. I love this program because it's not a Pearson product. It's, just going to say it.
You'll get a memo in the morning.
It's not McGraw-Hill, right? And it's super high quality. The professional development is the piece that you purchase. And we've already been, Jim and I have actually already been to a couple of professional developments from a variety of providers, and we already know that Open Up Resources professional development is very, very high quality. So, there it is, the exciting pilot plan that will help us align our district math practices, strategies, and instructional practices. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Ms. Voss.
Thank you, I, I have a lot of questions, I'm just trying to digest. I'll just start with, I'm, so, can I just get a little bit of a 30,000-foot view of what happened? So, we had some changes in math, and it sounds like there's a big change that just happened. So, we're switching from one curriculum to another, is that? And I'm just curious how-
It's a pilot program.
How that came about and when it started and why we decided we needed the change. So, and, and, you know, I think we've been talking about, we, or, you know, the community has been talking about, let's do this improvement in math, and so a decision was made to go to a different curriculum, and I'm not questioning the decision at all, I just am curious about how it got there and what got us, what the timeframe was.
Well, just to be clear, we have been talking about this for quite some time about what, how to make our curriculum align. I've noticed for a while that we had this alignment issues, and I watched the teachers work so hard in the middle school to try to, you know, align this curriculum, and they were putting a lot of time, a lot of effort into it, and as I said before, you know, adding practice worksheets and, and some collaborative experiences and things of that nature, those are fairly easy things to do, but it's very, very difficult to, and, and highly specialized to realign a whole curriculum to make it work with middle, or to make it work with our, our constructivist elementary program, and then with our integrated high school program. Not an easy thing to do. And, so that was one of the, one of the conversations we have had, you know, for some time. And the ed reports review of big ideas confirmed our concerns. But again, I do want to acknowledge the good work that the math teachers were doing at the, at the middle school. They were bending over backwards and still are to, you know, to utilize this, this resource. So, I guess that would be, yeah.
So, there weren't, there wasn't any sort of formal assessment that said we have to change curriculum, it was just the teachers coming together and saying, "This isn't working, we need to try something new," is that?
I just, I just want to introduce a suggestion about terminology that might be helpful in the conversation going forward. The math curriculum isn't changing. The resources that we're using to implement the curriculum are changing, because the resources that we have were not optimal for the teachers.
Do that.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to get to a point, I also, I agree with you about the Pearson comment, so, that's, can you give us just a sense of change? And, and thank you, the resources, you're right, math is math, and yet, there's certainly different ways to get kids talking about it, which is what we heard about, about the professional development, right? But when this professional development is tied to this Open Up Resources, and we pay for that professional development to come in, can you give us a sense of what that means? Do they come multiple times a year? Do they, do we get in-house eventually that knows how to do this? What are the costs associated with it if we're not paying for the resources to teach the math? What are we looking at with that?
Well, those are, are, some of those questions are unanswered, because first, we're looking for a high-quality, the best piece that can, you know, align our curriculum. So, some of those questions I can't answer very specifically, but the hope is, and, and the goal is always for, for the district to have its own professional in, you know, development providers within the district, always. And I am, I am certain that we can do that, not right away, obviously, but that is something that, that we will definitely be striving for. I also want to mention something that's very serendipitous about our professional development for the five math practices, which actually was planned prior to us understanding that one of the, the most important professional development pieces for Open Up Resources, guess what it is? The five ma, the five practices, orchestrating five math practices for mathematical conversations. So, that was a rather serendipitous thing, and we were very glad to know it, and that made us even, you know, value the program even more. So, the professional development was, they, there are a variety of options. There are, you can bring somebody in, you can do video conferencing, you, I don't think they have a send-out program, I think it's either video conferencing or, or having workshops within, within your district. We already worked with one of the providers at, with a, with the presentation about the curriculum, and I, we were really, really delighted with the high-quality presentation, and the, the math answers he gave were just absolutely spot-on. Absolutely.
The, the fellow from Open Up Resources who did the video conferencing presentation with us is an educator, and it was the first time that I've had a presentation from a textbook publisher that it was not like a businessperson talking about the textbooks, it was a math educator. And so, what he was able to do in describing materials was talk to us as an educator and with deep knowledge of the content and, and how the content is, is laid out in the resources. So, that, I think, was really appealing to all of us.
And that was in contrast to the other two presenters we had, Carnegie and CPM Math. These were textbook people that came in, that were hired to do a textbook presentation, but the person from Open Up Resources, he was a math educator, so.
Yes, Ms. Berman.
I imagine also, I mean, just to, like, I feel like, Dr. Voss, that what you're, you're getting at, and I mean, you work at a university, so I'm sure, sure that this is happening, but my experience in Northampton is that we were always looking for best practice, and over a period of time, that changes because human beings are changing, and that through the data that I feel like everybody is collecting and that Dr. Provost is poring over and looking at, that that is all propelling us to revisit what we're doing, and that this is so appropriate that at times, that we are circling through and thinking, is this as good as it can be? I mean, I, I think it's so exciting that we are part of a community that is so engaged and drawing from so many different resources, and, you know, I am going to say that we have a superintendent who is holding us and asking this of us, and that we have teachers that are- this of us, and that we have teachers that are stepping forward and a curriculum director who's, you know, facilitating this so that we can have deep inquiry. And the choices are made at different times for different reasons. And, I mean, I, I came in when we had investigations in Jackson Street, and that took a long time for people to feel comfortable with. That wasn't an easy fit for a lot of people. And now I just think like, who would ever, you know, you can't imagine, but, but investigations too comes out. And suddenly, that's helping us to reform what our priorities are in our teaching. So I just think it's really great practice.
Well, and that also brings up something that Jim and I were talking about, big ideas. Not big ideas fault, but big ideas was one of the very first Common Core-aligned curricula. And it might have been fine for a certain amount of time, but the Open Up Resources is, it's state-of-the-art curriculum, quite frankly, or state-of-the-art material, as opposed to big ideas. Because it's better, it's, it's, they've benefited from the work that was not as successful.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have one other thing too, which I, there are many people who are in this room who have worked in this district for many years. And I also want to sort of say, Dr. Voss, that I think the other piece to this is that the superintendent has now been with us for a steady amount of time. And I cannot, I feel like I am always saying this, but people who have worked in this district will remember that we went through many, many superintendents. And we didn't have the consistency of leadership, and we didn't have a curriculum director for a bunch of years that could give us this consistent direction and focus to let us dig into this stuff in a way that we haven't been able to. I mean, the number of interim superintendents and, like, that was a big chunk of time. I'm just, I'm just thinking about your question, which is such a great question, like, why now? What's going on? And that there are all of these pieces that I, I feel like we really do kind of forget how stability can help us to really examine things. Sorry, yeah.
So, so I just want to clarify. I mean, I'm just interested in what you learned from the other and how the decision got here. And I'm glad you're moving us forward. I think change is a great thing and trying new things. So if that was not-
Yeah, no, no, no.
-expressed, that is definitely what, where I was headed. And I was just trying to understand how we landed here relatively quickly, you know, it feels like, and, and that's probably a really good thing. I, I mean, I'm just-
Yeah.
A cup, just two other questions, just so we understand it. Are there textbooks or is this all through the Chromebook? Is one question. And the other question is, how much, it kind of goes back to Dr. Provost's comment. We're not changing the curriculum, we're changing the materials the students are using to learn it. So, I mean, how much professional development do we need to pay for from Open Up Resources? I'm sure they'll have something to offer versus what we already know about it. I'm just trying to understand the resources that are going to be required to invest in it to make it as good as it can be without spending money that we don't need to spend, right? So, two separate questions.
We're always very careful about that. So we will invest in the professional development in as much as we are able to. There is some sequencing and organization of the, of the math units that our teachers get, need to understand, not only just following what the unit provides, but also a deeper knowledge of why, you know, the units are, are set up in this particular manner. And then how to make some instructional moves within each of those units as a teacher who, as all the teachers will be different, differentiating the units, you know, because they have students in front of them and not everybody learns the same and in the same, in the same pace. So we need to give enough professional development, provide enough professional development to the teachers so that they're able to do that. And now it's late and I've forgotten your other question.
Textbook versus Chromebook?
Thank you. Good question. So this, this curriculum is available, or resource, is available both as an online resource and in hard copy books. And there are, there are activities and, and tools that can be used on a Chromebook or, you know, through Chromebook online. Or there are, all of the activities or most of the activities can be done at a desk with the real manipulatives in front of students. And in that respect, I think that's a really nice alignment with our elementary program as well. So there are a lot of opportunities, but we do not have to, students do not have to be in front of a computer in order to access the, the program.
So they're giving us the textbooks for free? Is that true?
No. If you buy the text, if you, if you want to have the textbooks, you, well, you have two things to do. You can either buy a book, a hard copy workbook, or you can print what you need from the online resource.
So the printing is free?
The printing is free. But if you want, if you want, you know, books or whatever, but everything is available for free on the internet. You just have to print it.
So what is our plan for our students learning math? Are they going to get something in print or are they just going to be expected to use a Chromebook?
Undeter, well, I would assume that we, that teachers would use the online, the online resource and print some resources. But undetermined yet, we're not there yet, so I can't answer that question. And also, I'm sorry.
But for the pilot, you're just doing the printing?
Yeah, for the pilot, we're doing, yeah. And we actually, we did buy some sample texts so that teachers could actually look at the whole. Yeah, we bought them for sixth, seventh, and eighth, or just sixth, was it?
No, we did it for all, for all three, just, you know, one copy of the student.
Yeah, so they could have, yeah, so they could see the whole thing. But, you know, the, the answer to that, I can't, I can't tell you yet because we haven't determined that.
Okay. Good night, Eleanor. I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
I don't blame you for leaving. Before you go, you had your Chromebook out.
Oh, I did.
You have your NPS-issued Chromebook, right? How's that going so far?
It's going pretty well. I think we've had a few issues just with like Wi-Fi. There are so many people using, you know, the Chromebooks now and just computers that it's kind of, it's been a bit difficult, I think. And then-
We're going to dial it up to 11.
Yeah. And then also, I think, just recently, I'm taking an ASL class at the high school and we're trying to do a research project, and it seems like there's some sort of glitch or something, and almost all of the websites that we need to access are blocked on the Chromebooks. So I think there are a few issues, but-
I can speak to that. I think it was around Tuesday of this past week, it might have been a little bit earlier than that. For some reason, our filtering software became insanely protective of us. So I can tell you that the school employees can't get to the websites they need to get to right now either. So we're working on figuring out how to have it take a breath and open up the websites again.
Great, thank you. Yeah. I think, I think there's just like a few little kinks that still need to be worked out, but overall, it's, I think it's a good, it's a good program and, yeah.
I just saw you working on it, and I asked you, is that really your Chromebook?
It's actually not on the agenda, David.
No, no. I was wondering if that was-
Come on, count it down to one.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for being here.
Bye, love. Thank you.
Okay. So, any other questions about the pilot? No other questions? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You going to stay for the whole time?
There is a personal message coming up in the item after this for any teachers who want to stick for like two minutes.
Okay. Personal message? So we are now-
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, it's way down the agenda. Never mind.
Okay, so-
Does it make sense for us to, we have a lot of rules and policies, and I feel like we-
Well, we have a bunch of things that are just referrals, so I think we should be able to go through those quite quickly. They're just being, we're, we're being asked to refer things to committees. So I think we can, we can soldier through them. The next one is a vote, a transfer to create an ESP position. Kami, did you want to speak to this one quickly?
Sure. So Student Service Department has the need for an additional ESP since the budget was approved. We've had a student move in after the budget was done. So we're requesting to transfer the funds from the, out of district tuition account into the Bridge Street preschool ESP account. And we're estimating $20,000 would be the salary for the year.
Okay.
Move to transfer funds to create an ESP position?
Second.
Any, any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have a request to refer the matter of physical education finance to the Budget and Property Subcommittee. This comes from Ms. Buszansky. Do you want to make the motion and-
Yes. Motion to refer the matter of PE finance to the Budget and Property Subcommittee.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So we, you know, our protocol is that we need a referral from the school committee or the superintendent to put an item on the Budget and Property Subcommittee agenda. So it seems like we are deep enough into this new phys ed program that we should maybe stop and take a look at what is it costing us? What does the budget actually look like? Because as we've been ramping up, the expenses have been increasing, and I could tell you more about it, but I can't really until we talk about it as a Subcommittee. And then we could bring back any referral or information about it to you. So I'm asking for this committee to refer this issue to the Budget and Property Subcommittee. And during that meeting, we will also be able to discuss any other issues we'd like the Budget and Property Subcommittee to discuss. And so I invite all of you to let me know, as the Chair of the Budget and Property Subcommittee, any issues you'd like us to be taking a look at since, in advance of the budget. And I'd like to get this going now because I know that come January, February, we're going to be right back into budget season and we won't have a chance to look at some issues. I'm not looking for any extra meeting time that we don't need to be meeting, absolutely like to keep that to a minimum, but I wanted to bring this one forth. And then I know we have another one coming on its heels, the next request.
Okay. Excellent. So all those in favor of, oh, yes. So by finance, what you mean is sort of costs?
The budget of implementing this new physical education plan that we implemented. Is it three or is it four year? Are we in the fourth year now?
I'm in the third year now.
We're in the third year now. Right, exact.
Does it matter that it doesn't say that there-
Does it matter that it doesn't say what?
That there will be a vote on-
It says vote, request to refer matter of PE finance to the budget.
Well, mine doesn't.
Okay, well.
Yours doesn't? No.
Maybe you have the old version? Do you have the newer agenda?
Must be the filtering software.
There you go. I have no idea.
All right. Okay, so there's been a motion made? Yes.
Ms. Buszansky? No questions? So you, can you just clarify what your request is from us? If we have ideas, how, how do we go about sharing this?
That's a good question. Could you email ideas of budget issues you'd like us to consider? That we'd like to sort of generate in this next meeting, ideas to bring back to the school committee to refer to budget and property, so it's a little bit cyclical. So we could talk about them now if you have an idea on the topic?
I don't. That's what I'm wondering. If I do later, what do I do with that? So I come to the meeting or, I mean, what's the- You could come to the meeting, or you could, you could just email it to one of the members of the committee, or me, or all of the members of the committee, and we could add it to the agenda to vote on whether or not we want to have it presented to be referred back to the Subcommittee.
Exactly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some serious sausage making. Okay. So, there's been a motion made and seconded to refer this item to Budget and Property. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The matter is referred. Next, we have a request from Dr. Voss to refer the matter of electric school buses to the Budget and Property Subcommittee. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to refer the matter of electric school buses to the Budget and Property Subcommittee.
Second.
Ben, Ben's that?
Yes.
Yes.
Because, you know, we do all these other things besides school buses. We have people driving to Springfield for the, I mean, we know we've got the van now, but in the future, it'll get replaced for the, you know, the IQ pathway, innovation pathway. And then, and, you know, we just heard about how we're going to have outreach workers going to preschools around the town.
Vehicles.
What?
Vehicles.
Vehicles.
You could say vehicles.
So could we, so could I amend this to say, electric vehicles, school buses and other transportation?
Absolutely.
And then, I'm, you know, I don't, you know, I assume that the city wants to do this also, and, you know, the other half. So, you know, the other, other departments of the city. And if there could be something about coordinating that, because there's some infrastructure that would be really good in terms of charging and stuff, and if that could be added in as well. So not just our school buses, not just our vehicles, but also coordination with, looking at coordination with the city about electrifying some of its transportation as well.
Yep.
That's what I meant. I often-
Is that part in our purview?
Okay. What's that?
Is that part in our purview?
Well, to coordinate- Not really. And, you know, we already are, we already have a policy to replace vehicles.
Yeah, so it would be important to talk to the other departments.
It's just the things that, like, school buses are a little bit of a different animal because they're not-
Separate contract.
Available in electric and we're contracting with an outside.
Yeah, well, but we would do it on, right.
If he was still here.
So we'd have, that's, that's fine, we can certainly do that.
But anyway, just, you know, I think otherwise, if it's too narrow-
Think broadly. You're recommending the committee think broadly if we actually get to talk about this. I have another amendment.
Okay, so why don't you just amend your-
In light of the editorial and the public speaker that have occurred since I asked this to be, for this to be on the agenda, can I add that we also talk about seat belts to the school buses, to my request? Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded to refer the question of vehicles, including seat belts and, and on school buses, to the Budget and Property Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have a request to refer discussion of whether or not to participate in pilot superintendent evaluation process to the Superintendent Evaluation Committee. And this is from Dr. Voss, and thank you for catching that, Dr. Voss, because we talked about it last meeting, but we couldn't do it because it wasn't on the agenda. So if you want to make that motion?
Sure, I will make the motion to refer discussion of whether or not to participate in the pilot superintendent evaluation process to the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of this one? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have the renewal of the legal services contract, and I believe Ms. Klima is going to give us some, some good news about the concerns about pricing that we had last time.
Correct. I've got a couple pieces of information for you. So you had asked a question about how much we had paid in previous contracts with the company, Sullivan and Hayes. So I did some research. Where'd I put my, my piece of paper that just? So in fiscal '17, hourly rate for the attorney was $225. Fiscal '18, it was $232, which was a 3.1% increase. Fiscal '19, we paid $239 an hour, which is a 3% increase. And what they were proposing for fiscal '20 was a $245 an hour rate, which is a 2.5% increase. And after, the mayor had inquired on behalf of the city contract as well, they agreed to honor the same rate, which is the same $245 rate for both the city labor council and the schools' labor council.
They did the same thing on the city side where they came forward in like July and said like, oh, we want to raise our rates. And it's like, well, we just finished our budget and we just passed our budget, and so like, you have to give us a little more notice than waiting until after we pass the budget to say we want to raise our rate. So for both the city side and the school side, they've agreed to keep FY '20 the same as FY '19 and not have an increase, and then come to us with a little more advanced notice about the kind of increase they want. And so that was the, I think that's what we are.
Isn't it a three-year contract?
What are they, what are they saying in the third, in the second and third year?
Second and third year, they were looking at, when they had originally proposed it, fiscal '21 would be $255 an hour, and 2022 would be 265. So that was before that. So we could go back and ask them, or we could do a one-year contract, if that's what the committee wanted to do for right now.
So we could certainly just continue for one more year and then do a renewal, but with enough advanced notice to be able to work.
It will go over the, the city's threshold, so we do need to have a contract in place for this year.
So, how could we move to renew the legal services contract for only one year?
Yes, subject to further negotiation on the out years. I think that'd be fine.
That would be the two thirty-nine for this year or?
It would be what we're paying this year already, uh, what we just.
Or is that two forty-five?
Uh, was whatever the FY nineteen number was.
Two thirty-nine.
Two thirty-nine, yeah. So, no increase.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're gonna ask them to give us a proposal well enough in advance so that when the Superintendent puts together a budget, it can be incorporated into that and for discussion.
We really need it by December. Let's let me start.
There was no second.
So, can we request it?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. We'll, we'll request it, yeah.
Yeah, by December, right.
So, we need to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
It seemed like there were other people who were still looking puzzled, so I wanted to make sure.
No, I'm puzzled that they don't realize that we've just enacted our budget anyway that they haven't figured out by now, that the timing is off and haven't.
I think it was busy with some, there was something going on.
I can't imagine.
I don't know what it was, but yeah. So, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, excellent. So, um, scheduling of October and November School Committee retreats. This is, uh, Dr. Provost and, um, you.
And so, this is purely administrative. In our, or your rules for procedure, there's, um, requirement that the Committee meet twice a year for professional development slash retreat, um, activities. We have not always done that and we have been a little bit, um, we've also run into other things that have compromised that schedule. I think the last time there was a retreat was about this time last year. So, uh, this is a request just to see if there is interest to follow the rules of procedure. Can we get some dates on the calendar?
May?
Yes.
I'm wondering in terms of time spent, since at least three of us won't be on the Committee, if it's best scheduled for after January? I know that's a different year, but.
Is that a motion to suspend our rules?
Well, a rule's twice a year.
Calendar year.
Right, so it would be to. Spend our, yeah. Yeah, it would be.
And when was our last retreat? It went on to high school.
It was November.
It was November, okay. So, I guess the question is, the policy refer to fiscal year or calendar year?
I don't know. It's technically not a policy, it's the rules for procedure.
Right.
So, it'd be the suspension of the rules if that was to go forward, it wouldn't be a change of policy.
It's the read rule, isn't it?
Yes.
It's the not read rule.
Yes.
I'm just saying, that was a rule.
Yeah.
Introduced.
Meeting is, it's good, I think, like, one year though, it should be in the fall and then the other year, just based upon elections, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly, we have the ability to suspend our rules of procedure and we don't have to, you know, we, if we think it's more prudent to wait a few, a couple of extra months knowing we're gonna have new members, then it makes more sense. So, it's up to you, whatever, whatever people's. But you had some ideas about potential topics, you had?
I actually didn't have ideas about potential topics. I just wanted to try to get some dates on the calendar because I know it's very difficult and we're all here in the same room at the same time.
Yeah.
If, if we were to move forward with it, then what I would do is ask people for topics and to put things together. The one topic that has been presented to me by Ms. Buszansky was a budgetary, um, retreat.
Just. Just learning more about the, the inner workings of the budget.
Okay.
Deeper professional depth for the.
Education Finance 101.
Yes.
I would agree that, I mean, if that was what we were doing, it would make more sense to do it later when the new members are here.
Okay. The challenge, of course, was in January and February, you'll be actually presenting them the real budget, so it can be done concurrently with that, but yeah, but that's, that's fine too.
We could go ahead and pick a date for January.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And say that it's gonna be a budget, just whatever retreat. And my thing was, I think all of us get sort of a briefing when we began a budget on the budget from, well, your predecessor, I guess, was the, um, so it would be sort of a second pass at that, so a deeper dive into understanding the budget, but I'm open to.
Yeah.
And there will be, I'm sorry, new School Committee members at that point. I was gonna say, we could plan it for November, cause it's, even if it's a retreat, it's open to the public and we could invite the new School Committee members to get the budget portion done before they're sworn in. So, that, at least that's done and then in January, schedule a retreat.
Like post-election.
Kind of a goal-setting organizational, whatever.
Right.
All right. So, that is still a possibility. So, are there dates in November that people would look at? Do we, do we have, uh, do we have a?
Yeah, the twenty-eighth is open.
Yeah, that's not really gonna work. We'll bring the dressing and cranberry sauce.
I have to tell that this machine is giving us long block and looking at tonight and it's hard to find getting along, so.
I have my calendar.
Okay. Okay. So, we know that there's not a fourth Thursday available, uh, in November. It could be early December. I mean, it could be, you know.
Right.
I don't know what we have, do we, what we don't want to do.
Same joke.
Same joke, okay.
December is better, cause November's such a short.
Yeah.
Can I just also add one thing? Cause you know, I'm worried about the rules is, I don't believe, I believe that that was a topic for discussion of incorporating that into the rules of procedure and while the rules of procedure for two thousand nineteen have not been uploaded, the ones from two thousand eighteen do not indicate that we added the requirement to have it. It was just sort of a general agreement where we said that we didn't want to prescribe for future committees how many times a year they need to do professional development, but that we took it upon ourselves to plan it. So, I'm all for planning it, but I just want the public to know, it's not that we're not following our rules by not doing it. We're just.
That's correct. It was aspirational.
Yes, it was. And I really want to do it, but we're not, it's not in the rules of procedure, which we vote on every year, so.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know.
Sorry for my misinformation.
That's all right. So. So, the other option would be, of course, we could, we could, you could do a doodle poll, so we're not all staring at it.
Yeah.
What a good idea. Glad you thought of that.
If I may, we've at least narrowed it down to two weeks, which is, was a productive use of.
Excellent.
Four minutes.
Totally. So, we have a window.
One, it sounds like one before January and another after January.
Yeah.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
The same process? I, I feel bad about putting the onus upon Dr. Provost to do this coordination or to yourself for that matter. I'm wondering if we can come up with another model where perhaps one of us or two of us or the Vice Chair or we handle the, the, all the nitty-gritty logistics and feedback and coordination of it, of the PD. I just wonder if that idea makes sense to folks, cause I, I don't want, I'm hesitant to put another thing on.
For the budget one, I think that's gonna be pretty much, you're gonna be, you and Kami will be leading that one, maybe the next one, if we decide what the topic is.
Well, have we decided what?
We haven't, no.
Right. So, I mean, just a doodle poll, find, figure out what the topic is, coming back and saying, this is what we heard, whatever. I, John's fine with it, that's okay. But I would volunteer with a partner maybe to take that onus away from him.
Okay.
Here's a suggestion I'll throw out that might be convenient for all. We could have two topics for that retreat. One could be the budget and the other could be developing topics for the next retreat while everyone's there.
Yeah. That's fine, yeah. And we'll have, and we'll have new, pending new members there hopefully as well, so. Okay. All right, so we didn't have to vote on this. So, um, next, we have a report from the Superintendent on state mandates.
This was the, the personal message, so. If any of you went home and tuned in, here it comes. For those of you who are, uh, getting the documents online, um, it's the Superintendent's checklist that goes with this. If you're doing it on your phone, don't bother downloading the checklist, um, cause this is mainly global anyways.
Okay.
This item comes on the agenda as a consequence of a DESI board meeting Molly Burnham attended. She was the Board's voice in, um, our opposition to the, one of the many expansions, a request for PV CICS. As we debriefed after the meeting, she shared with me that she was struck by the number of mandates she heard the Board discuss in the short snippet of time she was there. This came at a time, you remember, when there was stresses expressed by many teachers about the growing number of mandates placed, placed on our staff. And since many of those mandates come, not directly, but through the channel of my office or through the channel of the Administrator's office, it was felt that it might be helpful to explain just how much of this stuff originates in other places. Honestly, the, the alt team is not sitting around thinking of new things for teachers to do. To give you a sense of why the documents are in there, one of these is the Superintendent's checklist from seventeen eighteen. That was, um, the Superintendent's checklist are a list of mandates that the Superintendent has to work through every year and certify to the state. That year, there were a hundred and fifteen items on the list. We have since, now, I will say this, some of them apply only to charter school leaders, some of them apply only to vocational, so it's not quite that bad, um, but it's a lot of mandates. We now have a Commissioner who is really honestly and firmly committed to trying to give districts some relief from overarching mandates from the Department of Education. But even with him throwing his support and the full weight of his office behind it, the number of items on the Superintendent's checklist is actually up this year. So, um, there, that's just to say, not a criticism at all of the Commissioner, it's just to say, there are larger forces at play. The, above the state level, there's the federal level. And so, uh, as hard as we try to shield teachers and as hard as, I feel the Commissioner is trying to shield locals from unnecessary mandates, it's, this is a monster that's really difficult to put in, into a box. So, I just wanted the staff to know that I don't ask anything unless I truly believe that it's going to benefit students or it's something that's required. The thing that makes me sad is the list of things that require, are required, keeps getting larger and larger. And so, the list of things I think I can reasonably ask for, that I really believe in, that I think would be helpful for kids, become smaller and smaller if I try to make it manageable for staff. So, I just wanted staff to know that. I really do feel your pain on this. The hundred and eighteen items are things on my plate, right? Those are things I have to do. Many of them are things that, are things where I must have to assure that you're doing them, but, um, that's a shared pain. So, I just wanted to share that. I think, um, there are many other ways we could get into this. I certainly don't want to go through all the items on the Superintendent's checklist, but it's just an illustration of the problem and just a way of trying to bring some awareness to the fact that some of the things that impact the day-to-day operations of schools in a negative way are things that are completely beyond our control.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about that?
I just want to say that I did bring this up because I think that not only, you know, I know that teachers know about the state mandates, but I think that sometimes adults and guardians and community members, you know, don't know, in the same, actually, it's the same as like the budget, sort of having a conversation about the budget. It's just as important to understand the driving forces from the state and the federal government and it's very easy, I think, for us also to add more without thinking about what is there. And it's a really big picture and I think it's, it, it really is important for you also, um, Dr. Provost, to be, um, reminding us, you know, when, I think that people, we bring our enthusiasm of, um, things to the table, it's, it's a very important thing for us to remember the balance that is having to be made. So, thank you.
So, now we move into the report of the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. And Ms. Fallon, uh, has some first readings and then she has a series of second readings with votes that she'll be wanting to discuss. So, I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
Thank you. And before we start, having gone back and watched some of our past month's meetings, I would like to maybe propose that moving forward, first readings be an opportunity for us to point out the changes that are proposed and to ask any questions, that you need further information before the vote at the next month's meeting, but not to actually have a full discussion of the same questions and discussions for the first and second readings. Cause going back and watching, I'm like, oh, that was kind of a waste of time. We just had the same discussion at both readings. So, um, so for first readings tonight, we have policy DFH fundraising events. There are no suggestive changes, um, for policy DKC expense reimbursements.
I think policy is gonna be a, you know, a pronoun amendment, but not.
On fundraising? Are we discussing them as a batch or are we just discussing? Mostly.
Okay. So, I lost me here. It says there were no changes to fundraising, but you're saying there is a change?
This one, DFH?
Yeah, he's saying he wants to make an amendment.
There will be probably an amendment. Getting rid of hearses.
So, not coming out of committee?
No. And so, that's, yeah. So, my, my point is that I won't remember this next month when we go back over it and so I end up going back, re-watching the movie and so we have the same conversation twice.
Okay. Do you have a question about it though, Ms. Buszansky?
Sorry, I just was wondering if we're discussing, should you, are you gonna go through them and then we're gonna discuss each one? Are we for the first readings or? So, I was. Try not to discuss it till the second reading? I'm a little confused.
So, if there are questions that people have?
Uh-huh. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Nope.
I was just asking, that was my question. So, that was kind of my thing was like, like if you say like, uh, you know, this concerns me or why don't we do that? Or you have more information that you need before you feel as you can vote on something? I think that that's great to bring it to our attention, but I feel like we don't need to have a robust discussion of it.
Until the second.
Until the second reading, because I don't remember what we did from the last meeting to this meeting to make the changes anyway. So, it ends up essentially being Groundhog Day when you go back and watch the videos where we have the same questions, amendments and conversations, but none of us remember.
Got it. Okay, gotcha.
So, I, that's, it's just a proposal. So I, that's, it's just a proposal, obviously, you guys can do whatever.
We can.
I had a, I had a wording, other than the pronoun, that was one that struck me, but on the fundraising one, it, it just reads oddly to me that it says the principal of a school must approve or deny, it feels like it should be the principal of a school is responsible for approving or denying, the superintendent is responsible for approving or denying, that's all. Did you not want to hear that now?
Right, that would be my point, and that is such a good point, but I'm not going to remember that next month.
All right, I take it back, I'll bring it up next month.
But write it down in your special book.
You flagged it, you flagged it, and then next, next month, you can propose an amendment.
Great.
Just to make sure I can follow, this is very helpful, so if, if it's a concept in these things that should be discussed, so maybe the public can weigh in, we should bring it up in the first reading. But if it's the wording of it, it can't change until the second reading, so if you're nitpicking at the wording, just wait till the second. Is that?
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah, or, yes. Essentially, if you have a question, concern, bring it up now. If you're recommending I change something in a month, that would best wait till next month.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
All right, should I go on? Okay, the next up, we have policy DKC expense reimbursements. So, the idea on the suggested changes for this was to align it with the city's policy. So essentially, that personnel and school department officials who incur expenses and carry out their authorized duties will be reimbursed by the school department in accordance with the travel policy set forth by the City of Northampton, and that's reiterated in the second paragraph. We also removed assistant superintendent, not that we don't need one, and then added in the mention of collective bargaining, because obviously, anything that goes into collective bargaining, we're required to honor, and added the cross-reference of city travel.
So late, I'm not sure I can remember what my question was.
Oh, I'm sorry, and we added the entire third paragraph directly from the MASC's policy.
Okay.
Because they updated their policy in 2016.
Oh, so, yes, I remember I have a question, just, so, Dr. Provost, do you and, do you two have a set, what are we calling it here, a travel, monthly stipend? Travel stipend?
Yes, that many staff who are required to travel between buildings as part of their job, have the option of either getting a set amount, I think it's $25 a month, or, is that correct?
$120.
Or actually turning in mileage and getting reimbursed at the, at whatever the rate happens to be at that time.
Okay. I didn't realize that, it's just interesting to note. Okay. Are there any other questions? I have some nitpicky thing, but I'll save it for next month.
An amendment, you mean, like a change?
Yeah, it's a little language thing, but anyway, go on.
DKB?
Okay. Policy DKB, salary deductions, we essentially, the Subcommittee is proposing that we eliminate all what the bottoms, the last sentence that says that the school district shall not act as a collected, collection agent for an employee's debts, except when it is required to do so by court order. And we included the legal references, but then updated, this original policy was so old that it was from 1978, and the contract references were, were very specific, so we just want to add as a contract reference, NACE collective bargaining agreements, individual employment contracts.
So, those are all the first reading items. Now we have the second readings, which?
Yeah, so these are all second readings and votes. First up, we have policy DIB, types of funds, revolving funds. We, I would move that we amend it to read, all revolving accounts must be approved by city council. The list of current revolving accounts will be maintained in the office of the business administrator, and add the legal reference that's listed.
Do you have that one? Mine wasn't open. Okay. Which one do you want to look at?
I don't know.
DIB?
I don't think they have it either. Here's a hard copy.
So do you guys, that one's actually one set, two sentences? Do you want me to repeat it to you?
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Very short.
I, I know these because I'm on the Subcommittee, but I can't find these.
They're in our packet from?
The first.
Last month.
From last month, so Tuesday, August 6th.
That's where I'm looking, I'm not looking at our first, thank you.
I can wait, they're all in there.
Sorry, those didn't go out in?
I guess I have a, I guess I may have one amendment to it, and that is just that it's really the, the city council and the mayor approve those, it's really that the city council's not independently approving those.
So you think I have to add in the mayor?
What's that?
You want to add yourself in?
I think it's more accurate, actually, because every financial order gets, has to be recommended by me and then signed by me, so it's really not, the school committee's going right to the city council.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to.
So you're moving to add that first sentence, that all revolving accounts must be approved by city, the city council and the mayor?
That's correct.
Or by the mayor and the city council.
It could be the mayor and the city.
Mayor and city council?
I mean, it has to originate, it can only be, an order can only be put forward by me, so either way, and then I approve it.
You can say by the city, no, that wouldn't cover it.
Because we are the cities.
Yeah, I'm just throwing that idea out there, is there one word that would cover both?
Should it say that must be approved by the city council when put forth by the mayor? If you're saying you're the only one can initiate?
And you're, you don't have to give it to that. I just think the mayor and city council are city councils.
Say the mayor and city.
I just wanted to imply that the, that you're, that there's not, it's a two-step process.
So should we say?
A two-step process in state law, not just by, you know, city.
So should it say must be approved by both the mayor and city council?
I think just saying like, be approved by the city, mayor and city council would be fine.
Okay, I would second that.
Okay. So that would just, you can make it more, more correct.
Should we vote on your amendment?
I, I guess that would be great, is anything, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, now we're back to the main motion. I'm not usually making amendments, so sometimes I do make them. Any other questions about this one? Okay, is there a motion to approve the policy?
I made it, yeah.
Okay, was it seconded? Mr. Moore?
I'll second it. I'll do it.
Wasn't or was?
No, it was.
Okay, Mr. Moore has seconded it. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay.
All right, next up, we have policy DI, fiscal accounting and reporting. The only change that we're suggesting for this was that we add an, the word additional, so an audit of the school department's account should be conducted annually, in addition, oh, now that's redundant when you read it out loud, in addition, the committee may request. Oh, am I on the wrong one? Sorry, we're on DIE.
DIE, as in die?
Die, yes.
Audits.
Audit, die. Audits. In addition, the committee may request an additional audit of the school system's account at its discretion. The committee will reconsider, or will consider recommendations made by the auditor for maintaining an efficient system for recording and safeguarding the school department's assets. So I'm guessing there's an amendment.
The amendment is to change the letter A to the word N.
I would second that.
Okay, just to make it grammatically correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of good grammar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, so that A is changed to an N, and now we're back.
Does anyone care about the redundancy of in addition? They can request an additional audit? Nobody else cares? Okay.
I don't think so, I think it's right.
You probably don't have to say that to the in addition, right?
It's redundant, but I didn't notice it the first 11 times I've read it, so maybe it's not that important.
Up to you, up to you, I don't think it's that important, but.
Saying is not.
Give them something to fix in years to come.
Yes.
God!
So has this been made, moved and seconded?
It hasn't been moved.
Okay. Ms. Fallon?
She's done.
Go ahead.
Hi, I have to fix it, now that it's brought to my attention.
We can do it.
I moved to amend it to read after the first sentence, annually, period, and then change it to, the committee may also request.
No, that's the same.
No, you still think, may request an additional?
Yes.
All right, so we're just going to eliminate, take out in addition, and say, the committee may request. An additional audit of the school system's account at its discretion.
That makes sense.
Second. Thank you.
All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, okay, back to the main motion. All those in favor of approving the policy as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so.
And now we're on policy DI, fiscal accounting and reporting. We add it in, or designate, in two spots, the superintendent or designate will be responsible for receiving and properly accounting for all funds of the school system, and then in the third paragraph, that the school committee will receive periodic financial statements from the superintendent or designate, showing the financial condition of the school department.
Okay.
I move to, yeah, move to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, any questions about this one? Mr. Kaufman?
So it seems like we are getting monthly financial statements, is, do we want it, rather than being vague and saying periodic, can we just write in monthly financial statements, since that's what we've been getting? Isn't it?
It is, unless there was some other reason you would want something else sooner than monthly, for some reason.
Okay, but I mean, periodic doesn't, to me, doesn't sound like it's giving us something tangible, so can we firm that up and just say with monthly, since that's what we've been doing? If that makes sense?
So I guess my only, yeah, I mean, I, I don't like to be overly prescriptive when I think about five years from now, a totally new committee, and maybe they decide that these meetings are ridiculously long, and they want to meet twice a month. Well, then they could potentially have one of these financial updates twice a month, so I just, I didn't, that was, that's my only.
No, it's a different concern, for what happens if we, there's no agreement on what period. Somebody says periodic is one seventy-five days.
Then they go back and change the policy to be whatever they want it to be.
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, a lot of it's not about, it's about, you know, the committee requests, you know? I think that periodic is fine, partly because, you know, sometimes we don't get a financial statement, like at the very beginning of the fiscal year, there really isn't, it would be pointless, it's kind of, we haven't done enough to, for it to matter very much, it just looked like the budget.
Do you quarterly on the city side, just, that's like our, but that's something that standard employers wanted, was like quarterly reports?
I think periodic is good, it allows for enough flexibility, so no one's going to violate it, but it makes it pretty clear that it should be happening on a regular basis, as opposed to, oh, it's been a couple of years, look at the time, you know?
And I think the next sentence kind of, other financial statements as determined necessary by either the committee or the administration, so, I mean, I think that gives us the, the right to, to say we'd like something more frequently, more information, more frequency, whatever.
Yes.
Is periodic the MASC word policy? That's what they recommend, so most school committees use the word periodic.
I can tell you that.
That's okay, I, I, my sense is these are taken from MASC boilerplate language, right?
Ms. Fallon's checking the MASC database.
I'll have to see on less than.
Well, she's checking, I'll just say, the reason I ask is because I think lots of people think about it for a long time, so I like to start with them and see what they came up with, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's a good idea.
It's a little bit different.
Yeah, so school committee will receive periodic financial statements from the superintendent showing the financial condition of the school department. They say periodic. We've been amending our language to include or designate, some of that allows, allows for the business administrator to, to give us that information.
So are you comfortable with them maintaining the MASC language? Okay, so is there a motion on this?
I thought there was.
Okay, so it's been a motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, next policy. DJA?
Aye. I got lost here.
DJA.
DJI is what she's going to say.
DJA purchasing.
Purchasing authorities, so in this, we once again added in language for designate, we added cross-references to all of the other DJ policies, and then we added in language that the purchase of items and services will comply with Mass General Law 30B, and will not require further committee approval, except when required by law or committee policy, because we do have policies regarding purchasing. So I would move to approve the policy as amended.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Very good, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so DJA is adopted as amended?
Next up, we have policy DJF, local competitive purchasing. We're just asking to leave the contract, leave the policy as is, and add in the legal reference of Mass General Law 30B.
Okay. Are you moving?
Oh, sorry, I've moved to amend the policy, approve the policy as amended.
Yes, Ms. Fallon?
Very nitpicky, I think the semicolons probably should be commas.
You know, I looked at that, too.
They're not full sentences.
Yeah, I would be fine with, if you, did you make that motion?
I made that motion. I circled three of them.
Yep.
It's your move. Supplied, after supplied, after specifications, and after system.
So there's been a motion to amend, to replace semicolons with commas?
Second.
Okay. What's that?
Sorry, we were just telling.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, back to the main motion. All those in favor of the policy as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so DJF is amended.
Next up, we have policy DJF, sorry, DJH, contracts, and this has been more recently reviewed, it was reviewed and revised in August of 2015, and so there were no changes recommended by the Subcommittee, so I would move to approve it as is, or as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
This is the topic we were discussing at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, it was.
I think, I think there's discussion, but I don't have a solution.
So I think where this was difficult this past month was just in the timing of how things
came about, and maybe that's unusual, and we don't need to worry about it, but that was where it was difficult.
I think, you know, I think that when I was thinking about that discussion, back at the beginning of the meeting, I think it is a thing, this, this whole thing, it basically assumes that a committee member can, can block a contract if they think it's important enough. And so, you know, all those various considerations would come into play, the size of the contract, what it's for, you know, what your, what your concern is, and, and, and again, how much you trust the people who are requesting it, you know, so, right? So, so all those sort of things come into play, as to whether or not you want to have it be a thing that is discussed at a meeting, versus saying, you know, I think that makes sense, and I, and you know, you might trust a person more with less money, you might trust a person, you know, more if you know that the thing that they're asking for is something that fits in in the bigger picture, that you know about. All those, all those kind of considerations, and I think this, this, this policy allows us, as individual committee members, to weigh all those things and decide whether or not we think it's, you know, makes sense to say, no, we're going to hold up the process. And you could do it even, and again, like you found, it was like, oh, I don't really want to throw off this whole training over, you know, this, this amount, you know, over my concerns, well, that's, that's perfectly legitimate. On the other hand, you know, if you were really concerned, you know, like, and I don't mean really, like, I mean, if it was a big enough concern, you'd say, it doesn't matter, we can scratch this training happening, because it's so bad, you know, what I, you know, in terms of the problem I'm seeing. But that's the kind of weighing we do all the time, all the time. So anyway, I think, I think this, I think you're right, the policy can't solve the problem, it's up to the people.
Well, two things, I think it's just important to clarify that it's not about blocking the contract, right? It's just if you have a question or a concern, you want to put it on the agenda. Nobody's talking about really blocking any of that, any one of us has the power to block a contract, that's it. But, and then secondly, I just wonder if there's something that might just be clarifying, and I, I, you know, I agree with what's been said in general, but maybe at the end of that first sentence in the second paragraph, that, or something about, I don't know what the language is exactly, but the contract has to come to us with enough time that we could put it on the agenda before it's being implemented, right? Because that's really what.
Things happen.
Of course, things happen, absolutely, and sometimes things happen just one-off, this is just, you know, what we're, I, I think that's kind of embedded in this in a way, but maybe it's just worth sort of saying it, right? Otherwise, why would it be here if, I don't know.
So I just, I just wanted to say that, of course, that's always been my practice, I mean.
Of course.
In many cases, the contracts go out weeks or months before anything gets done. This was a very special case, because we got a ruling from Joe Cook that came after we were already up against the training deadline, that's the only reason that it happened, so I just want to be clear about that. I don't, I don't know if that type of situation can be anticipated by a policy, certainly is not the type of situation I want it to be in either, because, you know.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Then I, I spent the next 48 hours thinking, are we having this training, or are we not having the training?
Right.
Ms. Fallon?
I was just going, I, I do appreciate what you're saying, I, I mean, we revised this policy to make it possible to have this process, where you would send it out by email, because we were running into that problem, where contracts needed to be signed, and, you know, we would get them the day after we had just met, so we knew that it was going to be a month before we could even vote on it. And I think this is the first time in four years that the timing was this bad, and that it came up unexpectedly, and so I think that I'm comfortable with the policy being what it is, and that, you know, if it, it is, it's a lot of pressure, I understand what you're saying, like, to make that decision on short notice puts everyone in a difficult position, but I don't think we've been in this position before, and I don't, I don't have a problem with, with maintaining the policy as is.
So, yeah, I, I think what made it hard, and I, I figured this out as the, you know, we had a nice email exchange, as I was trying to understand some parts of it, what made it hard is a lot of the previous ones that came were results of competitive bids, and those feel really different than when you get something with, with almost no scope of services in the contract, and no competitive. of services in the contract and no competitive bid, and it's a lot, it might not be a lot of money compared to our whole budget, but it's a very much, it's a large amount of money for the number of hours in the contract. And so, to not be able to talk about that, that's what, that's what made this whole situation a perfect storm of things that it was hard to deal with. And so, that's where I look at this, and I'm cognizant it's late, and maybe there isn't a solution, but something about it being, having no bid in it was part of the problem for me, too.
Can I just clarify, though? Because I'm pretty sure, are we only allowed to send out e-mail ones that weren't competitively bid?
Right.
As I read the policy, it says, if it's competitively bid, then it has to be voted on by the school committee to award to the low bidder.
That is correct. The one exception to that has been the time when we had a problem with the bid opening for the bus, and so, then you authorized.
But I'm just saying, the basic policy is, if it's a competitively bid, we have to actually vote on it at a school committee meeting. It's only non-competitively bid contracts that can go through this e-mail process.
And why is that?
Because below a certain threshold, they don't have to, go ahead.
So, what it comes into is, right now, the bid threshold is $50,000.
Right.
You have to formally go to bid. You have to have sealed bids come in, has to be advertised.
By state law.
And in less than that, over $10,000, you get three quotes, depending on the category and the exemption of what the category is that you're actually purchasing something for. So, that's where, it's technically not bid, it's quotes, and you don't have to get quotes if it's exempt.
And quotes could be sending an e-mail to somebody saying, send me a quote.
Send it out to a couple of companies, we make phone calls and go, hey, this is what we're looking at doing, are you available? What would you charge us for the day?
And they may not even respond, but.
Correct. But you solicited three quotes.
Yes, Ms. Spieski.
Well, and I don't feel terribly wedded to it, so, I'm, but, I mean, I think it's implied in this second paragraph that we would get the contract in a time, with enough time to put it on the next, so why not just put it into the paragraph, I guess, just make it explicit? But I could, you know, whatever. It is late, so, I don't feel completely strongly about it. And obviously, this is, was one exception in the four years, but that's all. Just thought it might be clarifying.
What would you, what would you suggest?
Just, I don't know, I have to think about the language, but something about having the contract come to the committee with enough time that it could be placed as an item on the next agenda, something like that.
But that kind of defeats the purpose of the policy, which was to allow contracts to be executed without having to wait for a committee meeting. Because, you know, we're going to hit a deadline for putting items on the agenda.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Can I make a suggestion? Because it is 10 to 11. Could we either vote on this or pass it back? I mean.
It doesn't sound like there's a deep, I just think people just want to express the concern. Yeah. Did you have any other, Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. I don't, I don't think this is policy, but I'll say it anyway. I think, in this particular case, and to prevent this from happening in the future, I know that if I'm going to get a contract similar, the timing, not a part of it, if I get asked to look at something like we got, I will probably be concerned, and I will probably ask it to come to the, to the school committee meeting, and I don't, I just think that's a waste of time. But that's my only leverage. So, I think that the solution for me would be to get more information when we initially get it, or else, I'm just voting on something that is alarming to me with the amount of money and the limited information that goes with it. So, I don't know if I'm really advocating for more policy here, I would just think that maybe off the record, or somehow, if you agree, Dr. Provost, we can speak to what would satisfy, in my mind, me, and maybe that would be everybody, but more information would prohibit this from happening, because I understand the downside to it as well.
Dr. Provost?
So, as you know, you get the standard city contract for each of these, and then you get a short blurb from me explaining what the contract is.
Yeah.
A process that many members have used when there have been questions or requests for more information that's in that is an e-mail to me. And there've been many times when someone has said, can you give me more information? And then, when I've provided it, they felt like their need to get more information was satisfied without requiring it to go on an agenda for discussion with everyone. There've been other cases where people have said, okay, well, that's the information, but I still think I want to discuss it at a meeting. I'm just pointing out that it's not a binary choice of either vote right then with that information, or wait till the next school committee to get more information. You do have the option to have some discussion in that timeframe.
Within the 40.
Yeah.
Okay. So, has this been moved? Seconded. Is there any other discussion or desire to amend? If not, all those in favor of approving policy DJH, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Onto DJ.
Yeah, next up, we have policy DJ purchasing. We would like to change the mentions of his or her to their, and then add in or designate. This policy initially had the purchase limits of, at one point, of $4,000, and we'd like to replace that with city limits, so that we don't have to worry about updating this every time the city updates its limit. And this was also revised in August of 2015, fairly recently. So, I would move to approve it as amended.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, onto DK.
Last one is policy DK, payment procedures. So, yeah, there are a few changes that just reflect our practice. We worked on this with the business manager, and it says, all claims for payment from school department funds will be processed in accordance with procedures, not regulations, and that payment will be authorized against invoices and vouchers that are properly supported by approved purchase orders added in or designate, so that the committee receives lists of bills for payment from the school department funds, and the list will be certified as correct and approved for payment by the school committee or designate. And then, yeah, it was just a replacement of a long, wordy clause within sure. And then, in the last one, we would ask that the school building administrators manage the budget rather than just observing it, and added in the legal reference of Municipal Modernization Act of 2016. So, I would move to approve policy DK as amended.
Second.
Oh, no.
Just a minor point.
Just wondering what it's going to be.
What's that?
What it's going to be, so, I have an answer.
No, it's not, it's not a problem, it's just we, the city has changed the treasurer to the treasurer-collector. We have a city, we've combined our treasurer-collector, so her title is actually the treasurer-collector. So, just to conform to that, I've just.
So, are you making more?
I'm making an amendment that we change it to city treasurer slash collector.
Second. Okay. You have to ask them to vote on that amendment.
Did you second it?
I did.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, back to the main motion. Yes, Ms. Fallon?
I have a question about the main motion, and it'll be the third paragraph, and crossing out, be responsible for assuring that budget allocations are observed, is something I don't want to necessarily lose that meaning. What's left there, I'm wondering if you've removed that sentence because you think the next sentence is the same thing, or we're actually getting rid of that. So, the next sentence says, ensure that, so, the superintendent or designate will ensure that total expenditures do not exceed the amount allocated in the budget for all items. And as written, what that means to me is, we have a budget, $30 million, we have to make sure we don't go over $30 million, but we don't have to assure that our allocations are as they were put. So, I'm worried about that.
Yeah, I know. So, that was exactly the conversation our subcommittee had for like 45 minutes. And what we came down to was discussing with the business manager and the superintendent that the wording is actually problematic, and that we do have to transfer between, even just tonight, we just created a new position for a student we didn't foresee coming into the district who needed a one-on-one. And so, it's almost tying the superintendent's hands if he can't make those allocations, and we have other policies that, you know, limit how much movement he can do and from where to where. And so, that was the rationale, but we certainly, yeah, thought long and hard about that.
And I think even more so because we have, at the, each school has its own budget, and likewise, you know, we give the schools a certain amount of autonomy to decide, you know, how they're going to spend their money. And, you know, obviously, the budget also, we specify how it's going to be spent, so it's, you know, and it should be a plan that you can look at, but it's also a plan that's going to be changed by a variety, number of people will be having to change it in order to just actually adapt to what's happening in the building. So, that was, that was the, yes.
And even with grants coming in or being canceled, or things not being funded, like there, as much as we want to think that we spend every penny exactly as how we anticipate it, there are so many changes, it's a living, breathing document, so.
So, I totally agree with that, and I agree with the spirit, and what I'm concerned is, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're writing a policy, and maybe it's cross-reference to these other things that limit the amount, but what I don't want to have is a policy that says, really, alls you have to do is not go over the total bottom line. And I think we don't, I think you're telling me we don't have that.
Right. Transfers over $10,000 need to be ratified by the committee. Transfers that create new positions have to be ratified by the committee. The only time when transfers in excess of $10,000 are done without committee is during that last month of the year when we're trying to close the books.
Actually, we do give you permission to do that.
I need to ask someone to make a motion to extend our rules to go past 11, because it's 10:59.
Motion to extend past 11.
Is there a second? Ms. Burnham, I hear a second from you.
I'll second it.
Can we extend for 10 minutes?
We could try.
We had the same conversation last month, too. I mean, I just want to remind.
I don't think we resolved it. We had to.
We did have. We went over this.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending rules to go past 11, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, now, we didn't turn into a pumpkin, so it's 11. So, so.
Are you taking the mask policy?
No, well, so, I wasn't, I wasn't. I was checking, so, policy, it's budget transfer authority is policy DBJ, and so, maybe we should add that cross-reference? Is what you'd like to do is just add the cross-reference, the policy DBJ, so that we know when those budget transfers are allowed to happen and when they need to have school committee approval? And I think, I agree, we did have this conversation, and thank you for checking on it, because it sounds like you did, and that's good.
So, did you want to make that motion to?
Yes.
Well, let's finish with.
No, I meant Dr. Boss.
Dr. Boss. That's fine. What you just said, I.
Okay.
I think it has to be an amendment.
Yeah, okay.
So, amend, making a cross-reference, and you just told me DBJ. Add as a cross-reference. Thanks.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Back to the main motion.
I was just, and we probably did discuss this last time, and I'm just not remembering, but does this align with the mask policy? This sources the mask policy, does it not? Do you remember?
It's a source, it says at the bottom, MASC policy, right? You guys did it?
So.
Yeah, well, so, that's where it gets a little bit, so, we did change the MASC, oh, there's too many papers. We did change the regulations to procedures, right?
Yeah.
That was MASC language that we didn't love. So, the regulations was MASC, and we changed it to procedures. Let me look at the rest of it, sorry. It's hard to do this when they're not next to each other. And then, yeah, and so, we also changed the salaries and salary schedules portion. You know, it's not identical, we've made it our own.
So, do we need to amend so that MASC policy, I mean.
It was the source.
No, 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 it's the source.
It's just not the policy.
We just.
Well, we modified it to fit what our actual practice is, too. For example, we don't, we no longer do the, every one of us signing the stack of bills.
Okay, I'm just curious about that superintendent.
Okay, yeah, so, those two.
Ensure.
What we're changing is the MASC language. We are, in fact, changing that.
That sentence.
The initial language for the last two, the superintendent, we're responsible for assuring that budget allocations are observed, and that total expenditures do not exceed the amount allocated in the budget for all items, and the, and the school building administrators will be responsible for observing budget allocations in their respective schools.
Sorry, that was the.
That's the MASC version that we are.
And we are changing it to ensure and manage.
That was our proposal at this committee.
Right, right. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
Well, if I can say, part of it was to make them more active verbs.
Yes.
If you're observing the budget, you can be observing it going into the red, and, you know, you don't want the superintendent to do that. You want the superintendent to take control and stop that from happening. And likewise, likewise with the building principals, you don't want to just hand them a budget and say, go implement. If they notice that they have needs in their building, you want them to say, you know, I want to move some money around so that I can address the needs I have.
Okay. So, are we okay now? We've made the change. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? I believe that concludes the policy portion of our evening.
Yes.
Can I just comment?
Sure.
I think it's a much better policy, so, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent. Next, we have a really quick business administrator's report.
Yes, you do. All right, so, put in your packet, our first financial report for fiscal '20 appropriations through September 4. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Gifts, we do have one gift that we received from Melvin Hurstowitz for $836,008 to bring street school to buy some new office furniture to the school. We want to acknowledge that. And you have.
It's against our policy.
Two warrants that your representative signed for the month of August.
Okay.
Personnel report, I can just quickly report that we had in August, 43 new hires, 27 transfers, 13 separations, and one leave of absence for the year.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I didn't notice this until tonight, under separation, three third names, and sixth names, and same names, two different days, and two different years of service.
Yeah.
Okay. I see, now, I see who it is. Okay. Interesting.
Good catch. Okay. Does that conclude the personnel report?
That's correct.
Okay, then, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You know, just speaking from my heart for a second, I feel like I should just say, wasn't that amazing? I mean, you had so many members of the team come up tonight, talk about the hundreds of thousands of dollars of competitive grants they've brought into the district. You heard the curriculum director talk about that wonderful pilot, the professional development we did over the summer. You saw the teachers here giving of their own time, and really genuinely excited about professional development. And I'll just say, in the discussion you had, you heard tonight, and also emails that I exchanged today, how many times today have you heard, Northampton is one of five in the state receiving this honor, or Northampton is being looked to as a model for other districts, or the Department of Education is sending other people here to see how it's done? Just from the bottom of my heart, that is really gratifying for me, and I feel like things are really moving forward in a positive way in the district. But I do have a traditional report, so I'll say that, I'm sure that as well. With the exception of the transportation issues, which I've been in communication about, the school is off to a very strong start. As those of you who attended know, we tried something a little different for convocation this year, the Ellen Malvezzi.